And I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We have five members today, which is a quorum. First items, the consent agenda. The commission may request for consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. I'm going to take public comment. The only items are the minutes from last month's meeting and a request to renew a conditional use for a short-term rental at 2330 Fisherman's Road. I guess I'd like to pull that one just to get clarification on the renewal. So the minutes only. I'm going to open it up for public comment. All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Okay, so let's go to CU 4347. A request to renew a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 2330 Fisherman's Road.
Good morning. Aaron Vanoye, Assistant Director, Planning Development Services. We do have this renewal. It is their fifth renewal for the short-term rental.
Before you go any further, Aaron, is there any way we could get the TV on?
Yes.
So we can see what you're looking at without having to turn around.
It's on now. There's the light?
There it is. Perfect. Thank you.
Let me know if you want to go with that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Gully.
Appreciate it.
All right, so let's start again. So this is a conditional use for a short-term rental at 2330 Fisherman's Road. It is their fifth renewal request. They've been one of the original ones since the 2017 and has gone through. And every year, they've been doing what they need to do. We did check with our code enforcement and our San Angelo Police Department. They have had zero complaints in the last year. They are at Lake Nazworthy District 1, Councilman Tobin Hebert. So you can see there, they are right there in that area of Fisherman's Road, right as you come off of Knickerbocker. They've been a very stable short-term rental, been the same owner each year since 2017. And we have not known of any complaints over their history as of yet that have actually come to us through SAPD or the code, not just this last year, but during any time. So that was one of the reasonings of us putting this on the consent agenda. There really hasn't been any outpouring of opposition to this project. Even when we do our mail-outs, we don't get opposition. So they must be doing a very good job of working with those neighbors. And so we're very proud of that, that they're doing a great job out there. I think I did put this slide in here just in case. They are the big gold star here at the bottom. You can see the green are the ones that are approved with a conditional use and a certificate of occupancy. The red are the ones that are denied or expired. And the blue one, if you see there just to the right of Mary Ely Park, it was denied at the PC last month, and it's actually being appealed to City Council this month. And so that's why that one's under an appeal. With that, do y'all have any questions? Go back to...
So I brought this up a couple of months ago, and I sent you guys an email. Most of my questions, I guess, and not on this particular property, but just in general, on short-term rentals, is just about the designated operator and what that's referred to in the ordinance. And how do we confirm that that's been, that information's been made available to the neighbors? I think, it seems like that was something that was important in the writing of that ordinance. And it makes sense to me that there's a responsible person who lives in Tom Green County that can be contacted by the surrounding neighbors if there is ever an issue. Just kind of make sure that someone's accountable and that they're a local person.
Well, we do put in our notice letter, which does go to the properties within the 200 feet. It's required to put the operator and their contact information. So we do that, as well as the city staff information to contact city staff. Right now, that's our only notification that we kind of give out to that area. So if you're thinking about, well, if they were to look up somewhere throughout the year, how would they get ahold of that property owner? Couple of different ways, but as far as the operator, that's really the only thing we have right now. We have been talking about internally of, do we have a webpage that has some of that data on it? So we're kind of working on that. We haven't got it quite complete, but we're talking about that and what that might look like. And so we're thinking that that might be an opportunity for citizens to be able to say, hey, there's a short-term rental down the block for me. They were allowed last Friday night. I want to talk to the operator. How do I contact them? So...
Okay. And for me, you know, these short-term rentals have brought a lot of concern from residents within the community. And I think it's wonderful that we have a property that's up for renewal. They're in good standing. It doesn't look like there's any objection. But because of the heightened awareness that I feel like everyone's got when one of these comes up, I think it's important to continue kind of having these discussions and seeing these properties for the time being. We may reach a point where we get a bunch on the agenda that need to be approved, and we're comfortable putting it on the consent agenda. But I think for now, just to have a very short synopsis of their renewal and their status would be helpful for us and for, I think, for everybody else.
Okay.
So thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Okay, we're going to jump around a little bit. There's a zoning case that's tied to the subdivision plat case. So we're going to read the zoning case in first. And since the zoning, or since the plat is conditioned on the zoning, do we, should we read them in together, or do you want us to read them in and hear them separately?
It really doesn't matter since it's conditioned on, it's whichever order. Since your approval of the zoning still has to go to City Council, if you were approving both, then we would want you to do the zoning first and then the plat. But in this case, because of the condition, you can take them in either order.
Okay. So the zoning case is Z 2313, a request to zone 15.496 acres to the single-family residential RS1 zoning district in blocks 5 through 7, and to the Zero Lot Line Twin Home and Town Home Residential RS3 zoning district in block 8 in the Meridian North subdivision located along the extension of Slade Drive north of Royal Oak Street.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry Planner. So if you see that piece outlined in red, that will be annexed with the city. I believe it is going in November. And they are requesting single-family RS1 and Zero Lot Line Twin Homes/Twin Houses RS3 on the very top portion. I have a slide that will show you where the RS3 will be. But it is west of Red Oak and Scarlet Oak and north of Dominion Ridge. It will be in Larry Miller District 6 in the Bonham neighborhood. This is the future land use... Nope. There we go. I'm sorry. So this is the plat, the preliminary plat, and it shows that very top portion with the red circle, that is the RS3 zoning. The rest will be RS1, single-family, mostly because of the lot size. It is right there by the drainage pond.
Is that 11 lots, Ray?
It is. It is 11 lots.
Okay.
And we did notify 32 people, or 32 properties, and we did receive one in opposition. And the one in opposition that we received, it was on the RS3. That was their comment.
Can you show us on that map where the RS3 zoning?
Yep. So it is going to be this top portion and kind of angled down a little bit. So it'll be right over here.
In that corner.
In that corner.
Okay.
So staff is recommending approval of both the RS1 and the RS3 zoning.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions? Oops.
Anyone have questions for the staff?
What's that little corner? Go back to that other map. Up on top, you see that little jag. Is that someone else's property? Go to the prior one.
It looks like it's part of the zoning request.
See where that jags down? Is there something up on the top left?
So, no, that is where the... Let me go back to the plat. That is up there. That is up here. This will be a drainage, because the pond is right here. It's going to drain down.
I'm having a hard time visualizing. Yeah.
I keep going the wrong way. Sorry. Okay. So the drainage pond is in this corner, and it'll drain down this way.
Could you go back to the RS3? Okay. I'm still a little confused, but we're going to probably get some clarification as we move forward.
We have Russell here.
Anyone else have questions for the staff?
So are you saying the drainage? I'm sorry, Ray. Are you saying, like it says, I think it says Track A in the far right?
Yes.
Is that the drainage that you're talking about?
Yes.
Which you showed on the other map? Is that far corner? And then it goes down?
That's the drainage pond, and then it should flow out.
That's actually the, one of the arms of the Red Arroyo that comes off of Twin Mountain area.
Okay.
And it's actually flowing towards southwest. And under the southwest, that's the area that comes through that southwest Boulevard area. And so that portion above the RS3 is still private land, but that's future area that they're going to extend the drainage detention pond there to, as development keeps going west, they're going to have that as detention because that is the drainage area that goes through.
Thank you, Ray. I'm going to open it up for public comment. If you're wishing to speak on this case or any of the cases, please state your name, an address, or single member district.
Russell Gully, SKG Engineering. Thanks, Ray. She and Aaron Both describe that little finger up there. It's currently owned by the existing landowner primarily mostly to the west. But that is, that's kind of the south fork of the west branch of the Red Arroyo there. So the drainage from that area is going, will be going through that property. Track A is a detention basin that's designed to serve this meridian area. So we'll have a detention basin that serves this meridian area, but we have to kind of allow for a passage, if you will, for off-site drainage from the west to kind of bypass that detention basin to keep, kind of, give a route for the off-site drainage that comes in from all of that large area back going west, kind of behind that.
Can we look at the larger?
Am I going the wrong way now, Ray?
Yep, right there. So where would the drainage basin be, Russell?
The basin sits right in this corner. This is, I guess Tony Jones built a basin here. There's now a basin that sits in this corner here, and the drainage is coming back this way, kind of through... Get up there. Well, this thing's tricky. And goes around through there, and then that's the...
Yeah, you can see it opening up. Okay, so where is the RS3?
In that far left corner, I think.
The RS3 backs up right in there, kind of going this way, and makes a little bit of a dogleg right in there. Maybe we can... So if you see...
Okay.
That's the little corner we were talking about, and here's your RS3.
So...
So you don't have any homes? If you go back to that larger... For the preliminary plat, you don't have any homes on the east side of that, the northeast corner? Are those the northernmost homes in this subdivision plat, or are you going to have other homes that are...
That's the northerly most extent of what would be the meridian. That south fork of the Red Arroyo really cuts in half where Pinion Ridge is.
So that blue line that's kind of cutting at an angle to the southeast? Are you...
The top blue line, I think he's talking about.
Something up there.
No, go down.
Yeah.
Nope.
Up.
Up. Right there. Are you going to have any homes north of that blue line?
There will be a few. If you look, I don't know that it shows up on this plat, but there's a little, the angle is different. That line kind of comes through kind of like that. That blue line was reserved and acquired before we really knew the extent of that detention basin. Once we got into design and designed the detention basin, we didn't need that whole four acres for the detention basin. So now we're kind of reclaiming a portion of that, where that blue line was, that we're able to put the homes on it.
So the back portion of all of those RS3 lots that are being proposed in that area will be like the Pinion Ridge homes that have their back in that drainage area?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
But these will have an alley behind them. Pinion Ridge doesn't have an alley. These will have an alley behind them.
I'm having a hard time marrying the plat with the land area.
Chairman Stripling?
Yes, sir.
If, not that you want to place a hold on this, but if we pull up some of the images from the preliminary plat, we may have just a little bit larger map images.
Yeah, I'm looking at the... I think this is the larger.
Yes.
But there's a radius on here that I don't see on the land usually.
This is kind of focused in on that northeast portion of the larger preliminary plat. The greater preliminary plat, it picks up lands to the south and to the west. So you, it's been some time back, but the meridian, we did a preliminary plat of this area kind of south of which is circled here in the green.
Okay.
And so that was annexed and zoned and everything is the meridian some years back. So they acquired this roughly 10 acres in this area, kind of going from what Slade is in Royal Oak to the north towards the detention basin. So this is really kind of a, somewhat of a transition area. The first part of the meridian had a little bit larger, wider lots. As we all know, how economic conditions have changed, price of lots and homes. So this will be a little bit smaller. There's still RS1 lots, but this will be a little bit smaller homes or lots within this. These lots are 65, 67 feet wide, as opposed to some of them in the original meridian, where in the 75 to 80 foot wide. So this was kind of an effort on the developers' end to kind of make a transition or kind of pivot, if you will, to be able to have some smaller size homes and lots, if you will, for this area. But still RS1 primarily, except for that...
Okay, so I also see that there's RS3 that's northeast of this site.
There is also, go back, yeah. Up there where it says Coral in the top right corner, that up there should also be RS3.
Yeah, northeast.
This area up here.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so what is the reasoning for having 10 or 11 RS3 lots in this plat instead of RS1?
The developer was looking to kind of also diversify the product offering.
Okay.
And so that area kind of seemed like a good, safe spot to be more or less as close to that existing RS3 and to the back part of this development. And they were going to, this detention basin, you know, it kind of maybe becomes an amenity of sorts to these lots. And so they're kind of backing up to that. And so it would, it kind of fit in to kind of how to fit within this. So it just gave them an opportunity to offer a different product.
Have they given you any indication of what kind of development within RS3? RS3 is kind of broad.
And they're here, if they want to come up and speak, it's Sierra Vista home. So if you know the quality of their homes, you know it's a good quality product.
Okay.
And so within that, I guess it could be the Twin Home Town Home Zero Lot Line type product.
Okay.
So it probably would be something in that Zero Lot Line or Town Home type product.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Russell? Thank you, Russell.
Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this case?
Good morning. Austin Aguero, Sierra Vista Construction. Just to clarify your question.
Yes, sir.
We're looking at Zero Lot Line patio homes along the northern part there.
Okay, so that would be similar to what's in that area just northeast of this subdivision? Is that...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you, Austin. All right, anyone else wish to speak? I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Now we're going to read the subdivision plat. So subdivision plats, the Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. Item one, a request for a revised preliminary plat for the meridian to add 52 residential lots.
Good morning again, Aaron Vanoye, Assistant Director, Planning Development Services. This is the revised preliminary plat. As Mr. Gully was mentioning, this area below was the original preliminary plat with that arc coming across. And then you can just see kind of a little bit darker line there between block 7 and block 6 and 5 for the northern area. Down here again is Dominion Ridge Drive that kind of parallels with the railroad to the south. So it's in the annexation process. It's also in the rezoning process, as y'all just heard, for RS1 and RS3. It looks like it'll be adding 52 residential lots. It's in the future District 6 for Larry Miller and the future Bonham neighborhood, once it gets annexed in. Those are the areas it will be annexed into. So here's that kind of that zoomed in a little bit more. Again, this is the northern portion with Track A again being the drainage that y'all talked about. The main thing here, they wanted to go north instead of west because they've already got some of the infrastructure done. They have a sewer main that comes through and comes down Slade that goes to the original part of the meridian. And so that's why they're going north instead of west because cost of infrastructure are very high. So they're going to be able to build out Slade a lot cheaper because the sewer main's already there. And they've already got the taps focused out to those residential lots. So again, the 11 lots at the top, possibly RS3 zoning. This is just a larger area, just showing the master thoroughfare plan. You can see Coral Way is a minor collector, and then that's Royal Oak that comes through and across and goes out to the west. You can see that arc there that has the bottom of their subdivision plat that meets up with that. They are planning for that in the future. This again also is another reason of why they're kind of going north. Building a 40-foot road is a lot cheaper than a 50-foot road. And so those houses that would front that 50-foot road cost a little bit more per lot. And so this is what they're proposing.
That's it?
See my last slide on there? But we are proposing approval with the only condition of that they receive the RS3 zoning for those 11 lots so that the preliminary plat's lot size is conforming to the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron. Anyone have questions for the staff? I'm going to open up public comment again. Russell Gully, SKG. Be happy to answer any questions. Ask for your approval. Thank you, Russell.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Item B, conditional uses. The Planning Commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. Item one, CU 2340, a conditional use request for a short-term rental located at 1725 Live Oak.
Good morning again, Ray Limeberry Planner. This is a conditional use at 1725 Live Oak for a short-term rental. It is RS1 zoning, District 5, Karen Hesse-Smith and Santa Rita neighborhood. This is the map of Santa Rita neighborhood. It does show you, the blue are the ones that are approved and have not gotten their COs yet. The two green are the only ones that are approved with a CO. I'm going to tell you, sorry, I used the same picture for this one and the next. The one you're looking at is this yellow star, right above the Santa in the picture. And then the red are denied or expired. We did 22 notices, and we received two in favor, one in opposition. The one in opposition just didn't want an STR in their neighborhood. So this case did go in front of the ZBA because they were within 500 feet of another. It was approved. And staff is recommending approval. They do need to pave the two parking spots as there is no paved driveway as of when I took the picture two weeks ago about. And then obtain a certificate of occupancy and get a fire inspection every year. With that, is there any questions?
Could you go back to... Excuse me. Could you go back to where the footage was noted? Yes, that. I guess I'm questioning my understanding of 500 feet and where you measure from. Is it the front of the house to the front of the other house? Is it just the edge of the lot to the edge of a lot? How do you really look at that?
Currently, we do it as the crow flies, which means from the very corner of one property to the very corner of the next.
Is that the green line that you have on?
That is the green line, which made it 418 feet, which is less than the 500.
And you said this one had gone to ZBA?
Yes.
And is that why the red line?
Not so much. It was just to kind of show a difference to the ZBA board.
Okay.
Of if we were to measure it this way instead, it would be over the 500 feet.
Yeah, I don't think it is.
It is spelled out in the ordinance, the lot line.
Property line.
Okay. Yeah.
Because I remember it came up on the school over by Lamar, because the property of the school district property went way down the road.
Yes.
And if you measured from property to property, it was close.
Yeah.
And, but if you actually measured to the school, yeah.
Yeah.
But remember, under the current ordinance, there is no separation from schools.
Right, right. I'm just saying that was just on the property deal, you know.
Right.
Ray, can you add some color to the discussion at ZBA and what the rationale was for the 7-0 approval?
They were thinking it's a different, I don't know if block is the right term, but since it's more facing Live Oak and the other one is Avenue I was what they were.
And that's how they got the 559 feet?
Well, that was following the street. But ZBA just discussed it, and it was because it was a different block, it was not right up against each other, so they approved it.
So Avenue I, Avenue I is the one that's currently, has a CO?
It is approved, and it is in the process of getting a CO. It has not received a CO yet.
It's one of the blue.
Correct.
Blue star.
It is. And in fact, you will see it next month up for renewal.
Up for renewal?
Correct.
But it's still not, is it operating as a STR?
It is not.
So it's been approved, it's been, so it's been a year?
Correct. Well, in December, it will be a year.
All right, anyone else have questions for the staff? Thank you, Ray. We're gonna open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? All right, we're gonna close public comment and take discussion or a motion.
Well, I see the rationale perhaps of the red line. The other one's not operating from right now. But if they both were, did their COs and all that, then they would both be within 418 feet, more or less, by the crow flies.
Personally, I, I think the location on Live Oak is, for a short-term rental, is pretty good.
Yeah, it is a good location.
It's a busy street. I am concerned about the distance, being that it's part of the ordinance, and it seems to be important to our city council in their discussions to try to put limitations on these, so.
So I'll ask John again, so I can clarify. You said that in the ordinance, it says lot line to lot line?
Yeah, basically says something like, no short-term rental may be located on a lot that is within 500 feet of another lot with a short-term rental. So we take that to mean you're measuring the closest point on one lot to the closest point on the other lot.
That's the crow fly.
Yeah. And that's, even if it wasn't that clear in the ordinance, that's typically, if it says this can't be located closer than this, it would be property line to property line unless it's stated otherwise. For example, there's some alcohol-related ordinance that measures from front door to front door.
Oh.
But that's, that's not the case. That has to specifically be the ordinance for it to be measured differently than lot line.
And ours doesn't say that, that specific, other than lot to lot.
That's right.
Okay.
We, we may discuss this a little more once we get to the short-term rental ordinance later.
I saw that. That's what I'm thinking about.
Because there's some questions about whether we get rid of the 500 feet altogether. And we included a provision about separation from schools, and so there's a discussion on measurement there as well.
Yeah. Right now, the way it is.
I, I don't think, I'm just kinda speaking of the future, I don't think we should get rid of the 500 feet rule, but this has already been approved by ZBA, that they think that there's enough distance. And so.
Yep.
I'll move to accept as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
I can't remember, maybe I missed it, but did we have a public hearing on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that one to, one to four?
So it's two to three.
Two to three.
Failed.
Two to three.
Yeah.
So it did not pass. I got a feeling we're gonna have this discussion again on another case. Real soon.
Yeah.
Like the next one. Okay. So CU 2343, a conditional use request for a short-term rental located at 1305 South Jackson.
Ray Limeberry, again, planner. This is also a request for a short-term rental at 1305 South Jackson. RS1 zoning, District 5, Karen Hesse Smith in the Santa Rita neighborhood. The same map, and they are the other yellow star down below Santa. And if you look, this is, we mailed out 23 notices, we received one in favor, zero opposed.
It shows three stars on your map, Ray, can you?
Oh, I didn't update that, I'm sorry. Yes, I updated the stars but not the number, I'm sorry. There was three in favor.
No opposed?
No opposed.
Okay.
So I did not include the distance one on this one, simply because.
It's in the packet.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah. And just to clarify, it's.
I'm gonna go back to this picture.
268 feet between the properties as the crow flies, 525 feet door to door.
Correct. So on this picture, it is down here, oh wait, that's Monroe, Jackson, this one.
It's that one, yeah.
It's this one.
That's the lot.
So, and then it goes, it's the same Avenue I, 1802, that it would be within the 500 feet of.
Okay.
But staff is recommending approval. Oops.
Did it go before ZBA?
And it went before ZBA, and they approved it. They do have the paved parking spots, so we're just asking them to maintain it, obtain a certificate of occupancy, and get an annual fire inspection.
Okay. Thank you, Ray.
Did you want it on the picture?
Sure.
I'm gonna go back to the, this one, just so you.
Okay.
Does that sound the right map?
No.
Correct.
She doesn't have the other map in her presentation.
Oh.
It's a.
It is.
It's the bottom lot there on Jackson Street.
On the bottom lot, right here.
I think I can show you. Okay. Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Ray. I'm gonna open it up for a public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single member district.
Carla Cole, I'm here representing the owner of this property, and, he's out of town, but I don't have a lot to say other than, well, cause we came to the previous meeting that, where it did get passed, and the, when we purchased this house, the one that's already existing was not on the map. And we had also contacted the city, and we were told that we were good to go, there was nothing within 500 feet. And so went ahead and went through with the purchase of it, knowing that it's not a guarantee, but we've had a better shot. And then all of a sudden, this one comes up that's been, been here for almost a year. So anyways, just requesting that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think this has happened multiple times, cause it happened with the one on Live Oak as well, so.
You mentioned that you had come up before, can you be a little bit more specific about?
No, we were just at the previous meeting, where it did get approved, so.
What, I'm sorry?
The zoning.
I think that's a ZBA meeting.
Thank you.
Got it, I'm sorry. I thought you were saying that you had come to one of our meetings and.
No, 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 I'm sorry, the meeting that, where, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you the, are you the operator for the short-term rental, or?
I help with it, but I was also the agent that represented the buyer.
Okay.
For this one, so. Anyway, okay, that's all.
Thank you.
All I had to say, just wanted to.
Thank you very much.
And if I could point out, as you noticed, this has happened a couple of times. We have corrected the maps, and they've been corrected for a while. These are just basically older cases where, when the map was incorrect, I just don't wanna give the impression that we're still having this problem. The, the map has been corrected, we're working to get that online as well. But these are just pre-existing issues where people who contacted us months ago were given incorrect information, but.
Okay.
That should not be happening now.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, we're gonna close public comment and take thoughts or a motion.
Which is the unit that's within 500 feet of this one?
It's the same property on Avenue I, so.
The red, the one in red on this map.
Right, but, but red was not approved.
Right.
It was disapproved.
No, it's, it's approved. Red's approved.
Red's been, been approved.
But red's not operating as a short-term rental yet. They've had a permit since December of last year. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ray, but the property on Avenue I has obtained a conditional use for short-term rental in December of last year.
Correct.
But they have not operated as a short-term rental.
Correct, they have not received their CO. They're in the process of getting their CO right now.
Okay.
So let me ask if they, do we know that they're coming back to renew next year?
I do, they turned in their application. They will be in to renew next month. From my understanding, it was construction and, and they were redoing the house. It took longer.
And is the Avenue I house is the same house that was close to the Live Oak we just did, now it's the same one that's close to this Jackson's?
Correct.
That's right.
It's kind of here, and one is here, and one is here, so.
So, what is that, 200, is that 288 feet?
68.
68.
It's pretty close.
Yeah. I make a motion to deny.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor of the denial say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so three, two, to deny.
And I'll just make a comment. I hate that to some degree, but, and I like to see each one of these short-term rentals be individually done, the way our chair has asked for them to be done, so we can see them, cause sometimes there are extenuating situations. But we do have an ordinance, as John said, and I hate to not do what we've been charged with, and it's keeping the ordinance within the lines.
I agree, I'll just tack on to that. I mean, that's, that's the, probably the most frustrating thing for a developer or investor, is that we have these ordinances that have been contemplated and negotiated out, and heard in public hearings over and over, and finally come to some kind of an agreement that gets put in the ordinance, and then we don't enforce it. I mean, I totally agree that this commission and ZBA exist for the reason of extenuating circumstances or, you know, kinda unique situations, but I don't see that this is a unique situation, and I think that we should be consistent in enforcing our, the way that the ordinance is written, as much as possible.
I agree, I agree 100% with you guys. I'm concerned about the precedent that we set if we start allowing properties within 500 feet and go, go by roads, or take an alley, or whatever it is that gets the condition for the approval. If we wanna, if we wanna approve these, then let's, let's reduce the distance between the buildings, or change the ordinance and say it's by road, whatever. Change the ordinance, let's, I don't wanna grant exceptions to the ordinance.
My only concern is that, I mean, this, this one unit comes up and it says they are going to renew.
Yes.
Should we put a timeline that says, once you get approval, you've got X timeframe, six months, three months? Because this could go on forever, and it's affect, in this case, it affected two different units.
I mean, I, you could, you could have a, a regular rental, have a permit for a short-term rental, so nobody can go in closer to you, and never actually do a short-term rental.
Yep.
I think the way we viewed that is the, the initial one-year term is that timeline. If somebody were to come to you to renew one that they've never operated, you could take that into account in terms of your decision whether or not to renew.
Yes.
And there's no restriction on any, either one of these units coming back after, if that one were to be denied at the next meeting, they could come back in the January meeting, is that correct?
What's the timeframe?
Once you deny a conditional use, they are not allowed to reapply for a year.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be good to have, you know, a year's a long time.
Mm-hmm.
And that is, and there's a lot of opportunity lost, so maybe as we consider the, the upcoming, we need to take a look at that.
Yeah, a, a year's really not fair, because timing could, could make it where they have an opportunity open up, and they've, they've missed the, like, we, like these two cases. Let's say in a month, the applicant on Avenue I comes through, and for whatever reason, we, they're no longer a short-term rental. Now we have two properties that cannot apply for 12 months. That doesn't seem very fair.
No.
Is there a process, is there a process for reviewing that?
I mean, I, I get to, Avenue I I think was, had a problem because of construction. Construction's difficult nowadays.
Also remember, they do have the option to appeal to city council, so there is the possibility that they may not make it to city council before you guys hear the next, the renewal of that one.
Okay. All right. Brandon, you were gonna say something?
I'm looking for it in the code. I wanna say that there's something, there's an exception to the one-year period where council or you guys would have to make a finding that it meets the exception, so I'm looking for it, and I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay.
When I find that.
Thank you. All right, we got one more short-term rental, CU 2348, the conditional use request for a renewal of a short-term rental at 205 Crestwood Drive.
Good morning, Commissioner, Sherry Bailey, Principal Planner, and you are correct, this is a request for a renewal of a short-term rental. This is, they have been, received their initial approval of their CU almost a year ago, and so they've come in for a renewal. They have not been operating as a short-term rental, more because of family issues that have occurred, and so they're moving forward now, finally able to move forward, and the applicant is here. Also, the applicant, in answer to the email that you sent us out, the applicant is aware of all of the requirements, and the applicant lives next door, so they will be operating both as the owner and the operator on this piece of property. Now, I swear, there. And you can see, I like to entertain you. It is the large yellow air star, it's very close to Goodfellow Air Force Base. The, again, the ones with the red have either expired or been denied. The blue, and we have three of those, have an approved CU, but have not gotten their CO yet, and we have one that is operating within the Glenmore neighborhood. We sent out 21 notices, there was one in favor, and there was one that was opposed, and they did not give any reason that they were opposed, but they were the same one that was opposed a year ago. And staff is recommending the approval of the renewal, and it's subject to two conditions, to maintain the two off-street parking sites on the premises, and to obtain and complete their annual fire inspection, and that's what they're waiting for.
Sherry, not speaking to 1817.
A and M.
I'm sorry, that was my fault on the slide, I did not change the address.
Okay, so the address is the Crestwood Home?
It is the Crestwood Home, yes. And are there any questions?
So just to clarify, this is a renewal that would allow for a two-year extension.
That is correct.
But they haven't operated as a short-term rental yet.
They have not operated yet. They have not operated yet.
Do we have the ability to adjust that timeframe?
I think that's a legal question.
I think after they applied and for the year, they did not operate, is that what you're saying?
That's correct, yes. They've been going through the process and family things interfered, yes.
So, the year is coming up for the renewal and that's what they're doing?
For the renewal, yes.
And if I remember the ordinance, because I sat on that committee, it's been several years ago that we did this, but after the one year, then it would be two-year renewals, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
That's right. The two years is part of the ordinance, so, I mean, it's not like a normal conditional use where you can put discretionary conditions on it, so...
Okay, so if we approve it, it's for two years, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
We don't have the ability to adjust it? I'm only asking because they haven't operated as a short-term rental.
Right, and we don't know if there's any complaint.
Yeah, that's true. So, I mean, John's making the point that, you know, you have the authority to revoke a conditional use, so you could direct staff to bring it back within a certain time and reconsider it at that point. And that kind of goes along with the rehearing exceptions, and I did find that, but now I move my... 201. Okay, so the exceptions to the one-year rehearing period is if planning commission is specifically directed by majority vote of the city council to hear it, or the subsequent request is more restrictive zoning or the zoning classification of other nearby properties in the immediate vicinity has changed. So, for example, if we do do an ordinance that changes the distance requirements and that's a change, then I think these that you've considered today could probably be reheard.
So, we don't have to direct the staff or anything to rehear those cases? That, it sounds like from the ordinance, that that would qualify as a means to reapply?
Yeah, I mean, they may have to reapply and do an application, but yeah.
But in your example earlier, if that...
If we lost a short-term rental, that...
And they're no longer within 500 feet of another, to me, that meets that qualification.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Any questions for Sherry?
Sherry, we also have the right to revoke... I mean, they haven't operated.
Right.
But if there's subsequent police reports, we can always bring that back in.
Absolutely.
So, we do, even though it is a two-year period, if there's issues...
If there is an issue, yes.
Then we can bring it back in.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single member district.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I apologize, I woke up feeling a little bit congested, so I couldn't hear some of the comments that was said. But my name is May Pittman and I am the owner for 205 Crestwood. Did you have any questions for me? I guess that's what I wanted to know. Well, I'll just start off saying this. You know, we, I actually live on this street and we purchased this house, you know, because we saw in our own home, you know, the need for... My husband being prepped military, sometimes you have, you know, family friends that come in for different reasons and we bought this to, you know, just to help out other people that have that same challenging issue. We are very much aware of the noise audiences. We are very much aware of the community that that neighborhood basically consists of by not absolute, but many retirees and military families. So, I had hoped to get this up and running, but I encountered a death in the family of my brother and it was in another state, so that just kind of pushed some things back and unfortunately now I have another brother who's kind of encountered the same situation. But I am ready to proceed forward. Got a new excitement about doing this to be a help to, like I said, to military families that come in with... Well, I'll just say for ourselves, the reason for us was because our daughter graduated from ASU and so you have families that come in. If your house is not big enough, you know, like, okay, where is everybody gonna go? You want to be close and so that was the reason behind us making this purchase for this home. And so, we are very much willing to abide by the rules and guidelines and, like I said, and just to make it a help to, not just cater to military family, but because it is adjacent to Goodfellow, but to other families and that's it. So, if anyone had any questions for me?
Are there any obstacles that, with the property itself, that you have to clear up in order to operate it as a short-term rental?
No, all we have to do is just make the final inspection, like as you... I'm sure that... We were all the way up to just doing the final inspection where the fire marshal comes through and just confirm everything debris sway and everything is, you know, good and of course to make sure, you know, we have the fire extinguishers and the rules set up. But everything else was just good to go. Like I said, I just accounted that bump and it just took a little bit longer to bounce back than I anticipated.
I understand, no, we understand.
Yeah, but we are ready to go. We're ready to go.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have questions for the applicant?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm gonna close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
Just having a really hard time locking it up for two years since it hasn't met the requirements in a year.
I think there's still some opportunity to, you know, stop it in the event that there are issues and being, from what we just heard, as far as, you know, being there, I think that's gonna be very supportive of approval of... I'll make a motion to approve it as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Four-one. So, I think to Luke's point, if we're approving these to operate, we'd like to... It'd be nice to have some sort of timeframe put on the applicants to get them up and going so that they don't just hold places that prevent others from applying.
A couple of times Travis is the owner showing up and...
Yes.
That was...
It matters.
That really did help.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. Next item is rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments. PD 2306 and CP 2302, Coliseum Drive, request for amendment to the comprehensive plan changing from neighborhood to neighborhood center and rezoning from RS1, RS2, and CGCH to a plan development allowing RS1, RS2, and neighborhood commercial uses subject to certain conditions and limitations located along and approximately one block either side of the 4,4100 and 4,200 blocks of Coliseum Drive.
Sherry Bailey again. I'm sure that you recognize this. This has been tabled a number of times and we have brought it back. After looking at this over the last four months and talking to people, this is the area that we are actually talking about, changing the zoning to the PD. This would be the area that presently there is along Chadburn, some CH zoning. Then if you go north of Fortieth there, it's all RS1, except for right along Chadburn, a very short area. But everything else is RS1 and we've been very concerned about how things are changing in the neighborhood gradually, people doing things individually without coming forward. Some of the older people in the neighborhood are concerned very much about their property and what their options are. The planning commission also brought up the I, the concern about Coliseum and wanting to protect that entrance into the Coliseum area and keep it more as a residential or shaded boulevard entrance into the area. So, when we looked at what the options might be, what we could bring forward and still keep the residential character, for those that wanted to keep the residential character, we came up with the PD that we have recommended with a neighborhood commercial that's listed in it with some very specific conditions if you are going into the neighborhood commercial. If you're staying residential, they just don't apply.
Right.
It's keeping the residential there, allowing them to exist. It's allowing some changes into a commercial gradually in an area with the intent to also protect the Coliseum Drive as a boulevard entrance. And I will... Those are the recommendations that we have made as a planning department. And then the conditions that we're essentially talking about is keeping the commercial closer to the front, particularly along Coliseum Drives, and then having the parking, if possible, to the back. We... That would then keep it from becoming such a sea of asphalt. As you drove down there, it would allow for landscaping along the Coliseum Drive and a sidewalk along Coliseum Drive, because whenever there's anything going on at the Coliseum, people get out, they walk around, they walk in the street and Coliseum is a very fast street. It's a wide street and people go down and you then are mixing pedestrians and transportation and it just doesn't work. I talked about the setback, wanting to keep it closer. We're wanting to keep it signage down to a consistent smaller signage to advertise the neighborhood commercial, so you don't have an impact on the residential and it doesn't become a large signage area. We do recommend that using the existing homes for transition into a commercial, whether that's restaurant or office, that kind of use. Lighting will have to be shielded in order to conceal spillover. That is a problem in the area with the stripes that's down on the corner. We are recommending the neighborhood commercial because it generally is service and retail uses and we are restricting drive-throughs, so that would not be allowed. I talked about the sidewalks. In this case, we recommended that Burke Monument Manufacturing Company be considered an artisan use, which would be an allowed use in that area also. And that all non-residential uses must be compatible in size, scale, design and we will be able to control that somewhat through the urban design review process, which you're aware of. And with that, that is our recommendation. If you're not ready to consider this at this point, rather than tabling it, maybe we need to just pull it and come back at a later date or if you need some very specific changes done, we'd like to hear that. But we just don't know as a planning staff at this point what we can do.
Okay. Anyone have questions for Sherry?
I've got a couple of comments, I guess, and maybe kind of questions, but I think the... I understand the reasoning behind this. I think it makes a lot of sense to try to have... To encourage some redevelopment all around the Coliseum and I think there's a good opportunity there for that. But my question really is around some of the language that's used and what's proposed in the ordinance and it seems like it's pretty subjective. You know, the word encouraged is used several times in there. I mean, it is or it isn't to me. So, like, let's either do it or not. You know, if we're gonna save 15-foot setbacks, then let's just have 15-foot setbacks. Not encourage people to have 15-foot setbacks. And then on number four and five, the use of existing homes for office or commercial is encouraged. Number five, non-residential uses, basically all of that will be considered and approved by the urban design review. So, I mean, are we gonna encourage offices and commercial uses or are we just gonna leave it up to the discretion of the urban design review to decide what can and can't go in there? I think it either, again, that it is or it isn't.
No, I think to clarify, what I understand is if someone wants, has a house and wants to keep a house, it's a house. This doesn't impact them. If they want to take a house and make it a commercial use, then it would go to the urban design review folks and it would be considered, the redevelopment or changes to that site would be considered, so that they're...
I think I'd like a little bit more clarification on what's allowed there and what's not, so that we don't run into another issue similarly to what we have the SDRs in the last three cases where someone believes and, you know, makes an investment, buys an investment property and believes that they could use it for that purpose and then when it gets down to the, you know, to the time to pull the trigger, they can't. So, I just think there needs to be some clarity in what's allowed and what's not. I think it's the whole purpose of putting this in place from the very beginning and having the soft language in there doesn't help. It just makes it more confusing.
And I think when we write this into the ordinance form that will go to city council, we can be more specific and maybe part of the feedback we would want from you all is where we say something like encouraged here, you all would answer the question, "Do we want to require that or not?" And if not, then we would probably just remove it. If we want to make it a requirement, then we could. I will point out on the urban design review, that would not have anything to do with the uses. It's purely about aesthetics and landscaping, what the building looks like and the size of the building. That process would not say, "Yes, you can do this use" or "No, you can't do this use."
Yeah, on number four, instead of encouraging, let's tell it about it. To me, the word allowed would be better, because something that Luke said, use of the existing home as either an office or a commercial use is allowed versus it sounds like you're telling me that...
I agree, that makes sense.
Asking me to go to one or the other, but... So, if we just came back in allowed and... I think the rest of it is like Twix Street. I mean, you go down right here on Twix Street.
Yep.
There's commercial, residential, so we're... And we haven't changed anything. It's still a very nice street coming in...
It is.
As you're going downtown. And there's other ones, so I'm okay with it, but I totally agree. Let's take some of this, we won't get into the SDR.
And for clarification purposes, office or commercial use allowed under neighborhood commercial zoning?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I mean, that's the underlying zoning, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, it's either residential or neighborhood commercial? And if it's neighborhood commercial, then it goes with urban design and they... They're gonna make sure that it kind of blends in with the houses that are around it.
And the one reason we would leave something like that in, you're right, it's not regulatory. It's more of an informing potential developers, this is kind of the idea of what... And so, if you want to convert one of those existing houses to an office, you're golden, you can do it.
Yes.
If you want to tear two houses down and put in a Dollar General, then you're gonna have some hurdles to jump on.
Yes.
And again, I understand the point, but sometimes we do use words like encourage in an ordinance, but it's really just for that reason to kind of let people in the future know, this is kind of what we intended.
Would that be the same concept thought in number one about the parking in the rear, which I really thought was a tremendous idea for the residential that's on... which I really thought was a tremendous idea for the residential that's on the east side there. But it says all parking will then be encouraged to be in the rear. So is that what you're saying, John, is that this urban design review would look at that as well?
Absolutely, and that's a good point because that one, that one really is a reference to the urban design review. And so when we get something that somebody submits, if their parking's in the rear and they leave the front of the house looking like a front yard of a home, then again, they're going to sail through. If they want to rip out all the grass and all the landscaping in front of a house and put a bunch of parking in, they're going to have a little bit more review to go through and we're going to want to see how, how are you going to make it look nice and fit with the character of the neighborhood there?
Well, my thought about any of this on Coliseum, it's such a, an unusual street because of where it leads and how much traffic, specific to certain times of the year, and that some of the residential properties were there before the Coliseum was built. And so I want those property owners to be as protected as possible.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we have things that have creeped in that are commercial that have made it a little bit of both.
Right.
So some of these points are really good to protect, like the lighting, those kind of things. I love the idea of a house being, look like one of those cute little houses out front and all the parking's in the back and it's a little restaurant, cafe or something like that. There's several of those like that with the parking to the side of the back in Fredericksburg, and they're really well done, but they look like a little house with a cute little porch. So I love that concept along that street.
I like this, I like the signage.
Yes.
Requirements.
That too.
I think overall, it's a great idea. And I think the intent is to protect the homeowners that are there.
Right.
We've, we've heard from the community that there are a lot of, excuse me, older folks that live in those houses, been there a long, long time, and I fear that if we don't do something like this, that, that the possible outcome could be worse for those folks. Okay. Sherri, thank you. I'm going to open it up for public comment. If anyone wishes to speak on this, please come forward, state your name and address. All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion. I don't, are there any other changes that you proposed, Luke, or?
No.
I know you'd mentioned one, that item four.
Yeah, and I think the allowed on number four would be a better word than encouraged.
I agree.
That they would be allowed to utilize those existing homes.
Yeah, within the, within the requirements of neighborhood commercial.
Right.
And I think John's point was very good on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So with those additions or tweaks, I'd move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Five, zero.
Thank you, guys. All right, PD 2307, a request to rezone from single-family residential to the planned development zoning district with an underlying RS1 zoning with storage units as an allowed use on approximately five acres located at 4415 Armstrong.
Good morning again, Rayline Berry Planner. This is, if you remember, this got brought forward last month and tabled. Instead of a rezoning, we have changed it to a planned development. So they are a base zoning of RS1 with the allowed storage unit in the back. It is District Two, Tom Thompson, Lakeview Neighborhood. And I tried this time to get the plat up, so it is Lot Four that we are looking at instead of that big huge piece.
Yes. That helps.
It is about five acres. And we did mail out 25 notices. We received three in opposition and they are marked by the stars. So the city was, city staff were looking at the rationale and there, some of the vision plan is neighborhood center to the south, but it is mostly residential all around with the Lakeview Little League fields in the back. We don't believe it will conflict with the zoning ordinance. Adding commercial storage units is beneficial. In the past, it has benefited the residential surrounding property homeowners. There is no adverse effect and it has a history of success and it is a compatible transition. So staff is recommending approval with four conditions, and one of them is a urban design review. To ensure that the development is compatible with the residential area, we would want appropriate screening, the fencing, the landscape plan, building elevations, kind of look at the materials and colors of the building to make sure it doesn't stand out. It really blends in with the residential. We would like to see the lighting to make sure it's shielded and pointed downward. No recreational vehicles or mobile homes or salvage and junk vehicles on the premises. And they would have to provide a copy of the approved permit for their approach off of Armstrong Street. I did pass out the applicant, did provide a letter with their intent, and they are proposing nine conditions instead of three out of the four. The fourth one would still need to be a condition, but his nine proposed conditions kind of encompass the three, the one, two, and three of our conditions. With that, is there any questions?
All right, anyone have questions for the staff? Everyone's still reviewing the notes from the applicant here. I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. Excuse me, if you wish to speak on this case, please come forward and state your name or, and address, excuse me, or single member district.
Good morning.
Morning. Kelly Edwards, 4501 Armstrong. I'm the one that, I believe y'all have a letter in your packet that I submitted earlier. Was there any questions on anything that I had in the letter?
Where is your property relative to the applicant?
My property is the whole north side fence, the whole four-point, my two reds, that one and that other one, both of them.
Both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
On the whole north side of that property.
Is the property on the west side accessed from Armstrong? It looks like it's got a Caliche Road or?
No, you're not, cannot access it from the east side. You can only, I mean, from the west side, you can only access it from the east side.
From Armstrong?
From Armstrong. The baseball field is right next to the back there.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. I also wanted to bring to your attention that there is some storage buildings also in the plans for just down the street on the north of us. I just don't see why we need two sets of storage buildings within a mile of each other. North of us is more of a commercial area. It's a little past the city limits sign where you're here in the middle of all of our residents. You know, my question is, what's going to happen five or 10 years down the road with this? Am I going to be able to sell my land as a residential or if I'm just going to have to hold out and it's all going to become commercial someday? I mean, there is no commercial anywhere around. As far as my understanding, the closest commercial is Armstrong and 19th Street. It's all residential. We all live on large lots. We choose to do that. And I just, I think if you let one commercial building in, the next thing you know, we're going to have all commercial around us.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's why I'm here to represent. Y'all have any questions for me?
Anyone have questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
I have a question. My question is her reference of the lady that just spoke, her reference to a, another unit down Armstrong?
That, that's actually north of the city limits, north of 50th Street, so it's outside of the city limits.
City limits?
City doesn't have any jurisdiction unless they choose to subdivide. They came to us about two years ago but found out it was outside the city limits.
So if it's on the other side of 50th Street and this is 47th, we're only talking like three blocks?
Yes, ma'am, it's not that far. Our distance is probably very accurate.
I'm kind of conflicted with this case because on one hand, it's frontage on Armstrong, which is a highway. But on the other, and to, to this woman's point, it's all residential, all the frontage. I mean, there's, I know that there's some spots of commercial further south, but this is predominantly residential through this area. And I, I don't, I'm not particularly a fan of, of putting the self-storage units back on this lot like it is. There's no other use for this lot, commercial-wise, except for self-storage, the way it's been platted. The frontage, it's like a flag lot. The frontage is really narrow on Armstrong Street, and it's really just a means to get to the, to the larger tract behind the single-family home that fronts on Armstrong. It's got ball fields on the west side of it. I, I don't, I don't know.
So Sherri, on the three that opposed, they're all residential, those three, would you go back to that one with the three red star? Yes. She has the two on the north and those are residential use. The other one on there on the corner of 44th and Armstrong, do you know if that's residential as well?
It is residential.
Okay, thanks, Ray.
Is there any commercial development within this map view?
No. There is some zoned, driving by, they look like houses. I did not stop and walk in, but they are zoned neighborhood commercial.
And what's that, to the south?
To the south.
Okay.
Down in here.
So that, that T-shaped?
Yes.
At the bottom, used to be a nursing home. Part of it burned down.
Okay. Is it vacant?
No, I think somebody lives in it. But it used to be a nursing home, that's probably why it was zoned that way.
Okay.
Are you saying that that's that kind of strange-looking?
Yeah, the, the T-shape.
T-shapes.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it, I think it's all residential.
Okay.
And this before us is planned development, correct?
Yes.
So they can do storage only.
Correct.
Correct.
You may recall that this came to you, it came to you before as a request for, I think, neighborhood commercial, but your concern was all the other things it could allow.
Right.
So that's why we brought it back with a PD that is, it stays residential but allows the additional use of the storage.
So they couldn't come and put anything else in there?
Right.
Storage units or residential?
But just a note, you mentioned the plating. The way it was platted, it complied with the residential zoning because that's the current zoning. So there's nothing to say that they couldn't use that rear lot for a home lot.
Sure.
The way it's platted.
Like some of the other lots that have been platted around it.
Mm-hmm. But we're only talking about what looks like it, yeah.
Just the flag lot.
It's not the front part of it.
What is the, what's the width of the frontage on Armstrong for this lot? There's a number there, I just can't read it from where I am.
It looks like a 120.
I was going to say, I think it's 120.
Yeah.
120.
120.
For clarification, what was Lot Three?
That's the house. That is.
So they came in before us turned it out a couple of months ago and replatted this large rectangular tract into two tracks.
No, I'm sorry. It is this, this house right here.
So the, the residential tract that's not part of this discussion is single-family, carved out, and then they left that 120-foot flag to go to the, the extra parcel on the west side of the, the tract for?
You can kind of see the, the dirt road that they've made.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So anyone want to make a motion on this one?
One of the question, on this one, the, there's a single owner for all of this. They've just been replatted, but it's still one owner. Or did they sell it to a Blacklock Storage?
They have not sold it yet. It is, it is contingent on this decision.
So the owner is the one in the, in the house that?
No.
The current owner, yes.
No. There, there is an owner that owns both of those and he is going to give it to the gentleman that lives in that house and then sell it, the rest, the other lot, to this guy if this passes.
Anyone want to make a motion? Anyone? Anyone?
So in approving this, it would be a PD, is that correct?
Yes, with underlying residential and the only commercial development allowed would be self-storage.
And it would be either the conditions the staff listed or if you change any of them.
Can you pull those back up?
Yes. So we are requiring UDR, which he does address in his comments, however, the UDR is a little bit more in detailed and depth, I guess. And then he does cover number two and number three in his conditions. But then we would, we would need a copy of that permit from Tech Dot for the Armstrong Approach at the time of the plat, Tech Dot's comments, or they would have to look into it.
And I think staff's recommendation would be to keep the UDR requirement basically because it's the process of, for example, one of his conditions is number five, landscaping should be installed fronting Armstrong. We have to have some process within which to review, you know, unless we want to get so specific, you know, he could plant one tree and say, I put landscaping in, along Armstrong, and I don't think that's the intent. So we do need some process to review his proposed landscaping and buildings and all of that, fencing.
But with 120 feet, there is no landscaping, that's just a road.
Correct.
So there is no landscaping.
Well, he, he could maybe have, you know, some trees and shrubs on either side of the driveway, but yeah, that would be it. I think our intention when we first recommended it was because there are homes on both sides, maybe some type of?
Barrier.
You know, trees and things. He's going to have to have a fence anyway because it backs up to residential, but planting a few trees along there or something might soften, you know, living next to a storage units, but.
When, when does drainage kick in? Drainage studies?
That would be both, well, both with the plat and the site plan. The detailed drainage would be the site plan process when they come in and show how all the buildings are going to be laid out.
So there's going to be a lot of pavement or concrete that goes down?
It would definitely have, that's something we would definitely look at.
Correct. That was an approved condition of the plating process since our engineering services is looking for that as they move forward with their site plan. since our engineering services is looking for that as they move forward with their site plan.
Well, Trinidad and I, you got something to say?
No.
I'm just sort of kicking, but like on number seven, that he, talking about painting colors.
Yep.
I understand, and I appreciate, no orange, no red, no yellow, but I'd also like to say, no green. The tan doesn't bother me, the beige or the silver, even the brown, but I don't think it needs to be green either. If we're gonna approve, if, I'm just making that comment. Green to me is just like yellow and orange.
I think that's where the urban designer view.
They'll take care of that, okay.
And we've tended to use terms like earth tone colors. In a situation like this, where it's gonna be right next to homes, that sort of gets at that idea of, yeah, 'cause green could be fluorescent green.
Yeah.
I don't think that's their intent.
No, but even dark green.
But Luke's right, that's kind of part of what we review during the urban design review.
Good. I don't know what to do. I don't particularly like it, but...
Take a motion.
That's true, that's true.
It could be sold as a residential lot, it could be subdivided into residential lots.
About 125 feet, so that's gonna be hard on that little skinny...
It's wide enough to put a good size road in.
Yeah, well, the road would be the only thing you could do.
You can get a nice road to the five acres behind it.
Yeah. And right behind it, at the end, is the baseball parks, yeah.
There's a lot of, go back to that aerial map. There's a lot of houses that front on that. There's a lot of, no, there's not. I was thinking there were smaller lots, but it's on the south side of the street.
So across Armstrong to the east is R&amp;E, the Ranch and Estate.
Okay, what about, what about directly south? Is that one lot?
Down here?
No.
Nope.
North of, on the north side of 44th Street.
Oh, so this one?
So that's one lot right there.
Correct. That is a plat that came to you guys a few months ago. They platted these two out. It was just one big huge lot, and they platted these.
And those are gonna be residential, is that correct?
There's already a house on one of them.
I'm looking at the zoning map in the package, and I mean, it's all single-family RS1, where this is, and just across Armstrong is Ranch and Estate.
Yep.
But didn't you say that there's some commercial zoning? I don't see it on the map.
It's the vision plan, when they changed it for the nursing home.
But you're right, it is still zoned residential.
It is still zoned residential.
I mean, it just sticks out. It's in the middle of nothing but residential.
I'll make a motion to deny and keep it residential.
Okay. We got a motion and a second to deny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. That was this one. No. Okay, Z2312. A request to rezone 18.046 acres from Ranch and Estate District to low-rise multifamily, and to rezone 10.814 acres from Ranch and Estate to general commercial on a property located at the southwest corner of Loop 306 and Foster Road.
Sherri Bailey again. This item was also tabled from last month. This area is being annexed into the city and will be annexed in November. They are proposing, as the application indicated, to go to RM1 on the bottom area, and I'll, oh, let me go back to that. RM1 on the bottom, in the yellow area, and then the neighborhood commercial up there on the, or the general commercial up there on the top part, which backs up to the area in the city, which is also commercial. So it'll be general commercial on the north, RM1 low-rise residential on the south. We sent out 12 notices originally, there were none in favor. One was opposed, and we had an opposition, as you're aware of, from outside the 200 feet. One of the things that you said when you tabled it is that you would appreciate it if the applicant would talk to the homeowners in the area.
Yes ma'am.
And I understand that the applicant has met with the homeowners association a couple of times, and has talked with them about what their intents are overall for the area, and I will let them address that when they come up.
Great.
But...
Thank you.
Staff is recommending approval of the request to go from R&amp;E on the 10.814 acres to low-rise multifamily, and general commercial on the 18.46. And are there any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff?
So it's R&amp;E right now, Ranch and Estate?
Right now, if it came into the city, it would come in as R&amp;E, and they're proposing this change.
Okay. Okay. Thank you Sherri. We're gonna open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please state your name, an address, or a single-member district.
My name is John Duke Cutson, I'm the applicant. I'm the property owner of this 33 acres that we are applying for rezoning and annexation. I'd like to just, first of all, thank the HOA members of Butler Farms. We have met with them twice now, and have had a really nice, open chain of command. You know, we visited, talked about the pros and cons of this development. Ourselves, along with the residents, live down in Butler Farms. Foster Road's the main concern.
Yes.
It's frustrating that they've had to put up with that for years and years, decades. I know when we, when we start to develop this property, we'll be responsible for updating our part of Foster Road, but it is disappointing that Foster Road is in the condition it's in for as long as it has been. So that's, that's a concern we share with mostly the citizens of Butler Farms. And we are going to kind of team up to put some pressure to have Foster Road addressed. So any other questions for me?
Anyone have questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright, anyone else wish to speak?
Yes, my name is Danny Calhoun, I was here last meeting, and in fact, did meet with John Duke, along with some other people from Butler Farm. I'm not representing Butler Farm. Someone, if I heard you right, someone contacted Butler Farm to, but they didn't get a response. That may or may not, I mean, I assume that's true. I, but I'm not representing Butler Farm. I'm representing it as a citizen of one that travels Foster Road.
Yes sir.
I reiterate what John Duke said. That can's been kicked down the road, or floated down the road in this case. And I've called that a lane, not a road, I did last time, I stick with that. I certainly want to, as he said, reiterate, and I don't know what y'all can say, that will tell the council, I assume would be the supreme authority on Foster Road, of bringing it up to code. I don't wanna see John Duke and his partners have a failed endeavor. It's a good endeavor.
Yes.
And they have done a good job on planning that endeavor. I approve of it, but it cannot be fed, either fed or exited, as the road is now. Something has to be done. It's not fair to them, if you wanna talk about fairness, to build and have that exposure on a road that won't accommodate the traffic.
Yes sir.
And that's all I can say, is that's the big deal to Foster Road and this thing. They can get access from the frontage road, that's gonna be fine. But it needs that help. And if there's anything y'all can do, in your approval or just whatever you do, I'm kinda confused now, because of these other cases, what your authority is. But if you can sway and pressure...
I wish we had, I wish we had more authority.
I do too.
We don't have a lot of authority.
It's a good environment.
We can strongly recommend.
Yeah. Okay, strongly recommend. I'll buy that. Do you know where we stand on it?
Yes sir.
And we've got a, they may change, they may, it may be another person, but right now, we've got a good group.
And I don't wanna speak for my colleagues, but I think, for me personally, it's clear, it's blatant, that Foster is inadequate for the development that's proposed. And it's the number-one concern that I have about this project. I think the development of this site is great for our community, and I'd like to see it move forward, but I don't think that the applicant, the landowner, developing this site alone can address the issues with Foster Road, with the amount of traffic that's gonna be put on it from this development.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you sir. Does anyone else wanna speak on this case? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. Oh, yes sir.
Just to be clear, and Russell can touch on this, when we move forward in developing, we would have to widen our part of Foster Road. We'd be responsible for the 30-foot addition. We would have to bring our part of Foster Road basically up to Foster Road.
Absolutely, yes.
And so...
And that's good, and I'm thankful that you guys are doing that. It's the other half of the road. We're, you got traffic going both directions from this site. And so the improvements that you make on the southbound side are certainly gonna help, but there's probably money that needs to be kicked in on the northbound side for this development to allow the traffic flows that it's contributing, in addition to what's coming out of that neighborhood already. It's just an inadequate road.
And that's where we'd like to work with the city. I mean, it would be foolish for us to spend the money we're gonna have to spend on one side of the road and the other side of the road be ignored, so...
Yeah.
It makes a, it would be a very common sense time for the city to address that, when you've got a developer gonna kick in half the cost.
I agree. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion. You guys have heard my thoughts.
If I could just make one point about the way both our plans and ordinances work in a situation like this.
Sure.
This is one of the reasons, our preference is always for growth to happen right at the edge of the city incrementally out. Anytime we have leapfrog development like Butler Farms, it's jumping way past our utilities and services and infrastructure. The way most cities do this, just like we do, is you acknowledge, basically, if you develop way out past where we serve currently, that you're gonna have substandard roads until the rest of that develops.
Yes.
And so the short answer to the question, when does Foster Road get developed, or gets built out, is when those properties adjacent develop.
Right.
And while the city council could decide to set aside money specifically for this, that would be unusual, and there are other places they could do that around the city. And so the normal answer is, it gets built, and even if it only is half of it now, we know there are people wanting to develop the other side of the road, and that would get improved at that time.
Yes.
And then it would continue on south as additional development happens, so...
The other, the other point is, that the development that's being done on this tract will likely encourage the development on the adjacent tracks.
Exactly.
Especially if the city goes in and upgrades the road, as they should.
Yes.
Right. I just wanted to make clear that, for better or worse, this is how it's supposed to work.
Yeah.
In this kind of a situation.
Didn't they want to develop that other corner years ago? And it got a bunch of...
We had some proposals come in, yeah.
Yeah.
I think you're right, though. If this happens, that's gonna make that development more likely.
Yeah.
And I tried that not too long ago, correct?
It's been two or three years, I think.
Yeah, but not too long.
Yeah, not too long.
Can we see the conditions? Are there, are there any conditions?
No, with straight zoning, it's just the zoning.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
And in that approval, compel the city...
Yes, I like that.
To look at the road and do something about it, 'cause it's gonna continue to be an issue, even though the developers doing their part.
Allow something else to go on the other side.
Yeah. Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve with a plea to the city council to improve Foster on the other side. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So five zero. Thank you. Okay, we've done meridian. So item five. Z2314, a request to rezone property from general commercial to heavy commercial located at 3420, 3502, and 3550 North Bryant, and associated unaddressed parcels.
This is really a very simple request. This area has a vision plan for commercial. It is presently zoned general commercial. The applicant is wanting to zone it heavy commercial, because they, their business deals with small to medium to large equipment. They are looking at this entire area, because he has a vision on what he would like to encourage to cite there, along with his business. And he really likes the placement. This is almost outside of the city limits, it's up on North Bryant. It's, the zoning to the north of this is light manufacturing. There's light manufacturing across the way. There's general commercial south with the storage units. And then to the east are the large lot RS1 zoning that will eventually change in the future. And the future vision plan does show that.
I'm sorry, what does the future vision plan show for those residential lots?
That there is some commercial also that butts up against the eventually will.
Okay.
It's 14.3 acres, it's located in District 2, Tom Thompson's district, and it is the Riverside neighborhood. And that is the present zoning map. You can see what I was referencing there. The light manufacturing is a predominant zoning in that area as you move out of town.
It looks like it's west as well.
Yes, it is. We sent out 12 notices, there was one in favor. There were two opposed within the 200 feet. One of them was in that residential cul-de-sac that you can see down at the bottom here. And for the life of me, I could not find the second person there, an out-of-city owner. So their property is undeveloped, but I could not find it. Okay. Point it down, put it there. Staff is recommending approval of the zoning request to go from general to heavy commercial on this property. And with that, are there any questions? The applicant is here, and his representative.
We sent 32 notices and got none back?
Yeah. Yeah.
So if you could go back to the aerial map, this is a... This is a, this is a big thoroughfare for our community. It's high visibility. Can you talk a little bit about the permitted uses in light manufacturing versus heavy commercial versus general commercial?
Certainly, light manufacturing is exactly what it says. It's all kinds of more intensive industrial-type of uses. Heavy commercial, most people go to heavy commercial rather than light manufacturing, 'cause they're, they're very similar. But they go to it because of the outside storage. Heavy manufacturing does allow outside storage, particularly. It's still within that commercial zoning.
I'm sorry, heavy commercial allows outside storage?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Heavy commercial allows outside storage. General commercial has a very small percentage that allows...
And what about light manufacturing?
Light manufacturing does also. It allows outside storage, yes.
Okay, so what's the difference between heavy commercial and light manufacturing? Okay, so what's the difference between heavy commercial and light manufacturing?
Generally, just the intensity of the use. The heavy manu... Heavy commercial is still more of a retail type of expanded commercial use. And that light manufacturing is definitely more of an industrial use.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions for the staff? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Russell Gully with SKG. The primary purpose for this is that heavy commercial is kind of the intensity of the use. It's kind of equipment, sales, rental. And then within that component of the equipment rental, they have to service the equipment that has been out in the field. They'll come back and service that. So, you know, their hope is all of the equipment stays rented out, but there is on occasion that it does come back and.
Yeah, there's a service component to it. It's part of the business.
Right, absolutely. And so, they'll have a large office building there and then a service building to pull the equipment in, service it. Mostly, the equipment will be stored outside in the lot, if you will. You know, they'll start relatively small, somewhere in about the middle of this property, near the 3502 address, kind of with some building. We've been kind of studying the site, looking for that optimum location. And then depending on how this area develops out, how his business model grows, he may expand that, or this was platted in lots years and years ago prior to Bryant coming through there. And so, there's some platted lots in there, and Crest Street is...
Yeah.
Kind of cuts it. It's never been developed. So we've kind of been in this quandary of, do we ask to vacate it? Do we build it? You know, we just don't know exactly yet. So we're just kind of keeping our options open, going to build on some of those platted lots out there. But this zone change was kind of important to that whole business model so we could do this. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions?
Would ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. I think I've kind of said what concerns me about it. I'm not opposed to development up here. I just... It's a high-visibility area. I'd like for it to have... I don't want it to turn into a salvage yard like we've got in some other parts of our community that are on our major thoroughfares, and it's an eyesore. I'd like to have something that looks clean and nice coming into our communities. This is a major road. High visibility, high traffic.
Russell had mentioned that it was going to be for rental, so it's going to be. You expand on how it's going to be used, that it's not a salvage yard? Is it a rental agency?
I'm going to open public comment. Yes, sir.
I'm Kevin Albright. I'm the owner of the property.
Okay.
We plan on building a nice facility there with a showroom. It will be a... It will not be an eyesore. The equipment will be lined up nice and neatly.
Okay.
It'll be a great addition to the city. I believe that in the future plans, you will see that the... That the building would be built with a nice fascia on it, like a tractor supply type or something like that.
Yes, sir.
It won't be an eyesore. And I plan on working out my retirement there.
Okay.
And I'm 62, so I plan on working until the day I die. Thank you.
Is the property facing Bryant? That's where you'll have your equipment to be displayed?
There will be some equipment in the front. Most of it would be down the sides of the property. But we're in future plans to have a Katakahuchi dealership.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody's familiar with that. We're already in the process of getting approved. They've actually given me verbal approval.
Okay.
The process through Japan is still underway. But they and I see no reason it shouldn't be approved.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll have new equipment. And the new equipment would be more what would be setting out directly in front of the building.
Right, in the high-visibility area.
Yes, yes.
How about access? What do you view for access to Bryant?
I'm going to let Russell address that.
Thank you.
Russell with SKG. We've reached out to TextDOT and kind of started the conversation. We really have, you know, over 1,200 feet of frontage there available to us. So we're looking at what do we do at Crestwood or Crest Street? Do we put in Crest Street and let that be our entrance there? You know, it's far enough south of Humble Road that it meets all the TextDOT standards for separation. So based on TextDOT's separation requirements, it's about 425 feet between entrances. So potentially, we could have two entrances there off of... Onto Bryant. And so, you know, TextDOT's aware of that. We've talked to them. So we're trying to kind of figure out, do we do Crest Street or an entrance or exactly where? But we have reached out. And potentially, even as this develops further, access up to Humble Road as well. Because Crest Street does circle around to Humble Road. So we have possibilities there for good access to it.
Okay. Thank you, Russell. There are other equipment rental facilities in this area.
And it's a tractor supply. I mean, not that it's going to be.
Yeah.
You know, exactly the same, but it's similar. It's a lot of equipment and showroom.
Well, you know, on South Bryant, you have the sales space with all of the.
RVs.
RVs and all of that, so that's coming into the city as well from that side.
Can you guys speak to what aspect of the zoning of general commercial presents a problem for the proposed use?
It's the outside sales component. And one of those current businesses out there.
Outside storage?
Yes, I guess the equipment, the display of equipment, I guess, and even inventory that you're waiting to lease out is considered outside storage. And I think it's based on 10% of the land area, so.
That's not a lot.
It's not really a lot for us, so that's really the big challenge. And so, he's currently operating his business a little bit further north and I think on the west side of Bryant. So he sold that property, so he's needing to relocate. So this is the kind of relocation of that business to help an existing business out there kind of expand. So, you know, the north side of San Angelo kind of seems to be that industrial tied to that. There are some eyesores out there that I don't know what the city can do about that.
No.
You know, but, you know, Mr. Albright, I believe runs a very first-class business. And the ability to display and make it look inviting and like you're truly reputable, good business is important. So you're not going to see anything that you see out there that would... You can kind of see it across to the south and west there. That's just the old... Been sitting equipment there for years, just rusting away.
Yes.
It's not how Mr. Albright runs his business, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close public comment. I'll take a motion. Anyone wants to make it?
I have concerns, but at the same time, too, I think it would be good for that. You know what I'm saying?
I do.
Because you're beside the storage buildings. I don't like the fact that Aaron backs up in there, but.
So it's the outside storage component that's a...
That they're driving force. And he does run a good, clean place. He's out further north.
Yeah.
On the left-hand side.
You know, Joe, one of the things on Crystal Road, the old Crystal Road, we have a couple of units like this, and.
Yes.
They're maintained very well. The equipment is displayed and it's... But, yeah, the other units across are eyesore. I think this might help clean some of that up. So it's not ugly. I mean, it's not.
Right.
And I think in that area, with the access, north and south, or east and west, whatever that is.
I guess my concern was, and it'd be something you'd face, is turning in on Humble, because that's more of a residential road.
Yes.
Access from Bryant would be my main deal. But I think that's what they plan. Which is your main road, where you want to come from?
Certainly got enough frontage to.
To do that.
Yeah, to work something out with TextDOT for a curb cut or two.
And in the future, Humble Road is designated as a future minor arterial. Depending on how land is broken up and sold off over time, that road will be improved over time, and that is kind of a cut across if you're needing to turn south, once you turn south. I mean, that depends on TextDOT, but I think we're in negotiations with them. But that area is designed to develop, and we think this might be a way to get it started.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'd move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five-zero. Okay. Special use permit. City Council has final authority for approval of special uses. SU-2301, a request for a special use to allow a 119-bed skilled nursing facility in the heavy commercial zoning district located at 3215 YMCA Drive.
Travis, I think this should look familiar to you back in 2019. This exact spot did receive a special use permit for a skilled nursing facility. It is the same applicant that was coming then. They got diverted to another piece of property that they have since brought it up here in town, and now are ready to move forward with this. And in fact, they have done the initial site plan review submitted to the city, so they're really ready to go. This is 8.25 acres. It is in District One, Tommy Hebert's district, and it's in Rio Vista neighborhood. It is a skilled nursing facility. Any nursing home in the city is considered group living, and it does require a special use permit. And so, this in particular development fell into that kind of nursing home, skilled nursing facility type of use, and so it does require a special use permit. As I said, the original approval for this facility and this site was in 2019. That approval expired, and therefore, they had to come back. They are ready to proceed, and they have submitted initially for their building permit. We sent out 17 notices. We had one in favor, and we had one against. And the one against did not have anything in particular noted on their comment at all. They had just checked the box. This is basically the same facility that they had originally had in 2019. They are proposing to do... Move forward with it. It has kind of a star look with a circular parking and drive all the way around it. And we've seen the design, and it's the same good design that they originally came up with. And staff is recommending approval of the special use permit subject to four conditions of approval. The first condition is to submit the plan showing the installation of sidewalks along YMCA Drive and to complete that installation. Second condition is to submit a plat for this property that meets the requirement of the land development and subdivision ordinance, including required improvements. Number three is signage for the site must be submitted for approval and meet all of our requirements. And four, because of the size of this facility, it comes in our requirement for an urban design review for the site, which includes the parking design, landscape design, building design, covering materials, color, and design elevations. And with that, are there any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Sherry. I'll open it up for public comment.
Russell with SKG. Would ask for your approval of this. Maybe just a point of clarification on the sidewalk. We've submitted the plan showing the installation of the sidewalk, but completion of it can be contingent or based kind of prior to CO, so we're not building a sidewalk before we build a building.
Come on, Russell, what are you talking about?
The plat has been submitted and recorded, so that box is checked.
So a sidewalk would be installed before the CO is issued?
And we could just revise that first one to say, and complete the installation prior to certificate of occupancy?
Yeah.
To make that clear. That's the normal practice, but.
Yes, thank you, and would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions for Russell? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to speak on this? All right, I'm going to close public comment. You mentioned that I reviewed this case. It's been a while. If you go back a couple of slides, just a point of clarification for all of us here. The current zoning of this lot is heavy commercial. So I think it's important to consider that when you're looking at approving anything that's going here. Heavy commercial has a lot of uses that would not be good for the surrounding neighbors. And I think this nursing facility is good, especially considering the alternatives. So.
Doesn't that back up to the railroad tracks?
It does. It backs up to the railroad tracks.
It does.
It sure does. They've also... You can look at the site plan and see that they've gotten it as far from the tracks as they could.
Just a question that, Travis, you may have the answer to it. This lot looks like an area of eight acres plus is in the middle of that long stretch. Is that whole area heavy commercial?
I don't believe it is. I think there's general commercial zoning on the south side of it.
On the south side, but the rest of it?
The rest of it going north is.
Okay. But there are some major drainage issues up in that area also.
Very much so.
Okay.
We had heard about this when Parkview was being looked at as a major route. How does this affect that? Is that a...
That's a great question.
Years ago, a few years ago, Parkview... Originally, Parkview was intended to extend across the railroad tracks and connect.
The thoroughfare plan.
Into the Parkview there on the other side of YMCA. But that was removed, so there's no longer any connection.
And I think the...
Otherwise, you're right, it would run right through the middle of this property.
Yeah, and I think the challenge from... And this is going back to the Cox Road discussion to the east, is another railroad crossing is not something that the city wants to deal with. So. Okay, anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five-zero. Ordinance amendments. City Council has final authority for amendments to the zoning and subdivision ordinances. You want me to read both of these? Or?
No, no. The second one's short-term rentals, so we'll deal with that.
You're going to take them separately. Amendments to the Land Development and Subdivision Ordinance Regarding Administrative Approval of Certain Subdivision Plats and Other Revisions and Clarifications to Ensure Consistency with State Law and Changes to the City's Zoning Ordinance.
Thank you. Yes, this is the one you've seen a couple of times. We had a pretty good discussion at the last meeting on these changes to the subdivision ordinance. Just as a kind of a refresher, the state law that just recently went into effect just this year now allows most plats to be approved administratively. So we're proposing a change to the ordinance that would do that, make, again, most plats administratively approvable, so they wouldn't have to come to you all. The exceptions in the state law include plats for which a variance is requested. The exceptions in the state law include plats for which a variance is requested, and so we think it's important for you all to see any of those variance requests, so that would continue to come to the commission. But as I said, staff is recommending that most other plats be approved, approvable administratively. So we had this discussion at the last meeting of what plats might you still want to see, even though the state law says you don't have to see them. And so again, the variances, certain residential replats require a public hearing. If those requirements are met, then they would come to you as well, because this is where we would hold that public hearing. And then at the, as we discussed last time, preliminary plats, 10 acres or larger, and I have some samples of different sized plats to talk about. I'll come back to that in a minute. I noted this last time, but just, it bears repeating that an applicant can always, let's say we deny it, they can always come to you all for that consideration as well. So it's not like staff denies it and they're done. They can always bring it to you all on an appeal. And I will note also that this does not change the timeline. State law requires that plats be acted upon within 30 days, and so staff couldn't let it sit on a desk for two months and not do anything with it. We still have that same obligation that you all do to either approve or deny, or approve with conditions, plats that come before us. So there's also some changes in there, you'll note, on the notification requirements. That was a state law that changed, I think in 2019, if I remember, that made some changes. This just changes our ordinance to match what's in the state law. And so the couple of examples there, prior notice is only required for residential replats requesting a variance. Otherwise, those notices go out after the fact. That's the one that we've talked a few times of, why do we even give notices for something like a replat? Because it's, it's not a discretionary decision by you all. It's, it's a decision, you're only determining, do they meet the ordinance requirements or not? And so it often frustrates neighbors when they come and show up and say, I'm opposed to this, and we say you have to approve it if it meets the ordinance, and, and so it puts you all in a, in a tough position. I think the legislature recognized that, and the, in my mind, the primary reason for notifying of residential replats are to let neighbors know in case they are maybe violating deed restrictions or something like that. But again, so the state law changed it to where we would notify those folks after it happened. Still gives them time to challenge it if they're violating deed restrictions, but doesn't give the citizens the incorrect assumption that if they show up or submit in opposition, that you can do anything about it. And this is back to that 30-day thing. We clarified in the ordinance that the commission or director can take action even without formal recommendation of the plat review committee. That's the staff committee from fire and engineering and planning and permits that all get together to review a plat. The way the current ordinance is written, it implies that a recommendation of that committee is required before, before you all hear a plat. But now with the 30-day requirement, we have to make a decision within 30 days. So if for whatever reason the plat committee can't meet, or whatever may come up, we didn't want that to be a stumbling block in terms of bringing it forward to a decision. The fact is, we've always operated this way. We just wouldn't want someone in the future to say, well, you didn't follow your rules, the plat committee never made a recommendation. So that's just kind of a cleanup as well. This would completely remove the administrative subdivision section, because now most plats become administrative, so there's really no need. If you approve that, there's no need for a separate administrative subdivision. That's kind of a holdover from the old state law that said if plats meet these certain requirements, they can be approved administratively. That kind of went away with the new state law that says all plats can be, or most plats could be administrative. And then this last one is just a cleanup. There's two sections of the ordinance that makes reference to a planned industrial park zoning district. That was taken out of the zoning ordinance years ago, and so while we're bringing this forward, we thought we'd clean that up as well. So that's kind of a summary of those, unless you have questions on, on that, before I move on to these different sized plats. I'd be happy to answer those.
I do have one question, going back to the replating. So let's talk about some examples maybe of residential replats. So if someone has a one-acre lot in Santa Rita, and it's platted for one house, and they want to put four houses on it, is that administratively approved?
Yes, I believe that would be.
Because it meets the minimum.
It could be, yes, and.
Minimum lot require, lot size requirements.
Right, as long as it meets the lot size for zoning, it has the proper street frontage and all of that. Now, that would also have to be approved by you all.
Why?
Even if you didn't like it. Again, with plats, you're only looking at, does this plat meet the city's subdivision ordinance standards? There's no discretionary review with plats.
Okay.
And that's also per state law. Your role, to the extent that you review plats, is to basically answer that question, does it meet the city's subdivision ordinance standards?
Okay, so what about, let's take a larger subdivision that's being developed in southwest San Angelo. And the preliminary plat has 200 lots, and they've, they're final plating a section of it where they're going to end up with 300 houses instead of 200. Does that trigger?
Well, that would be a change to the preliminary plat.
Yes.
Which would come before you all.
That comes before us.
Depending on how we decide, but what you, what you said at the last meeting was anything over 10 acres.
Okay.
So I think we would interpret that. Let's say they're only making a change to the preliminary plat that affects five acres.
Yeah.
But if the whole preliminary plat is larger than 10 acres, it would still come back to you all.
Okay. If that makes sense? All right.
So I may give some examples.
Yeah, please.
Sort of an example, like you just mentioned, a very large preliminary plat. This one's about 100 acres and 230 lots. So I think it's clear that you all would want to see something like this, kind of give you a sense of the development that's happening. And we're going to go a little bit smaller as we go on. This is a 25-acre one with 36 lots.
Okay, now wait, before you go any further, you're saying if, if these plats meet the subdivision ordinance for, for residential plats, then we, we have to approve it regardless?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so this is another one that you all would see, because it's over 10 acres. And, but again, this would be the preliminary plat, so then let's say they came in with phase one to develop six or eight lots here.
Yep.
You would not see that. All, and then staff would look at, does it match this preliminary plat?
Yep.
And all the other regulations we have, and then we would be able to approve it administratively. And so here's one, we're getting close. This, this is 11 acres, so you would still see this one. And so while I'm on this slide, one of the questions I have on a future slide is, is 10 acres, is the acreage the right thing to look at, or is it the number of lots? I could see this one being one you may not want to see. It's, it's splitting a, you know, 11-acre lot into two pieces, a 10-acre and one-acre. And maybe the 10-acre threshold is fine, and you would see this one.
Just carving out the corner, that's all they're doing.
And then here's a little bit smaller, six and a half acres, but with 30 lots. Is that the right? Yeah. So this is kind of the opposite of that previous one. It's less than 10 acres, but it is 30 lots. So would the, a number of lots they're creating make a difference more than the acreage? So just a, you know, a thought in terms of how we move forward. I think that was it. Obviously, they're even smaller than this, but a lot of what I think, you know, any of the, you guys see a lot of plats where it's taking one lot, splitting into two, sort of like the one we saw there on Armstrong. Maybe not the best example, but. But we see a lot of those kind of replats where they're just, you know, you're, you're taking two lots and making four lots out of it.
Yep.
Something like that. So, and this is the, the question I basically just asked, is 10 acres the right threshold, or should it be based on the number of lots or some combination? So that's something we'd like y'all's feedback on. Oh, that's short-term rentals, so I think that's it for the subdivision ordinance, if y'all have any questions or direction on this idea of threshold for preliminary plats.
I don't either. You've raised a really good point about the number of lots. And it's, I think it's got to factor in somehow, not just straight acreage.
Yeah, I think if we were to make a recommendation, I think my preference might be to go with lots instead of acreage, and maybe some threshold like 10 lots or more, or something like that.
It's just like the 11 acres carved into the 1 acre lot. That's something we don't want to see.
It's just a waste of everybody's time, so it's very simple, but, yeah.
Well, if you, if you had a combination of the 10 acres and so many lots, because that six and a half acres that you showed with 30 lots, that's kind of, makes them a little bit smaller, so we might want some combination.
So if it's greater, well, I'm not sure how you do that. I'd just, to have a round number, I mean, there's not, no magic number, but.
I would say six to 10, but I don't, I don't know.
Just for reference, the current, or the, I shouldn't say the current, our current ordinance and the previous state law put the threshold at four lots. Anything four lots or less was one of the things that could qualify it for administrative. I think we would recommend that be a little higher, and again, we're only talking preliminary plats, but I think something in that range of 10 lots probably makes sense.
Russell, you got any thoughts on this?
Oh, I have a whole bunch.
We would welcome.
I'll just wait up there.
So if you have questions, other questions, that's.
No, I, I mean, I understand, I understand that state laws bring this change to us, but I think that, as you've indicated, it's, it's a great time for us to, to clean up and make this a little bit easier on all of us.
Yeah.
Maybe reduce the time that we spend in the planning commission meetings approving things that should be approved by you guys in the first place.
Sure.
Okay. Anyone have questions for John? I'm going to open it up for public comment.
I didn't want him to step on anybody's toes, there's a big line, so I wanted to be first. Russell with SKG. And I guess one thing that struck me was what Mr. James was saying, you have to approve it almost regardless, and so how much of that do you want to see and be made aware of? Sitting back there, okay, where's that threshold? 10 acres and 10 lots, or 10 acres and 30 lots, or, I don't know, you know, where do you draw the line in the sand? Somewhere between, between 10 and 20, if you want to go there? I don't know that I would make a point one way or the other. We're going to be doing the same work, it's just whether we come and present it to you and you see it or not, so maybe something that you want to do is those that staff approves administratively, maybe they can present it to you, or make a report or something that would say.
That's a good idea.
Here's what we've done since we've last met, and we've approved those, that way you're aware of it. I, I don't know. So in flipping through the, kind of the comments real quick, on page three, it talks about the applicant or their representative is strongly encouraged to attend this meeting. Have I been losing all of my invites to these meetings that were encouraged to attend? I guess it's been written that way, and I don't know, do we need to be coming to those? Do you want us at those? I'm not objecting to anything here.
Is this the plat review committee?
Yes. Yeah, you know, I don't, I guess that's always been a staff deal, right? So are we invited to sit in on those? Because it says so in here, so.
Yeah, that's always been in there. I mean, we could strike that. I mean, it's turned into, I think it originally was, tended to be sort of like a DRC-type meeting, but when we created the DRCs.
It's like a pre-development meeting.
Yeah, which we already have separate, so I mean, I could see just striking that.
And I don't have an objection to it, it was just kind of an observation, well, maybe I need to start attending these meetings with staff. Or is this where staff meets and formulates whether they're going to say yes or no?
Yeah, I think, I think Russell's right. I would recommend just line altogether, because we, we've basically replaced this process with that DRC.
Yeah.
Which is earlier in the process.
Yeah, I'm not trying to promote to remove it, it was just kind of a, something I needed to be joining the staff more often at these meetings. On page five of 10, where it talks about the appeal to the planning director's decision of 30 days, I don't know that that's an issue, just let's assume they, on day 45, they decide, you know what, I want to appeal that. I guess what they would have to do would be reapply, get you another, get another negative response, and then appeal it. I don't know if there was a.
Yeah, I mean, the idea is we just wouldn't want, you know, a plat approved in, or denied in 2008, you all of a sudden say, I'm going to appeal it. So there's got to be some timeframe. If that, if we want to make it a little longer, I don't think we have a huge problem with that. We just want to be able to close out the case and not.
Right.
You know.
60 days?
Well, I'm trying to think, wasn't there a 90-day, some administrative approval was good for, or maybe I'm just, maybe, 60 or 90 days, you know, and if it's something they sit on that long and decide a year later they want to try to submit again, I guess they could submit, pay the application fee, and then.
Start over.
That's the only thing, you just have to pay, pay an additional fee. The reason we, I mean, number one, that's a piece that's not changing, it's already 30 days for, you know, if, if planning commission denies it, they can appeal that to council, and that's a 30-day appeal. And most of our appeals in this, you know, in zoning and plating tend to be 30 days, so it's just consistent.
Not really an objection to that, because, you know, I guess all else fails, they can resubmit it, get another no, and then, then appeal, kind of thing, so. On page seven, if the proposed replat requires a variance and is protested, the affirmative vote of three quarters of the members present, is that a state law thing?
Yeah.
And then on E, it talks about required for approval of a replat of part of a preceding plat, if the area is replatted, was designated or reserved for other than single or duplex family residential use. So typically, our plats don't designate a use on them, do they?
They don't, but in some, in some areas they do, in some cases, in, in the ETJ, for example, where there's no zoning regulations, sometimes they'll put a note on a plat just so buyers know, all you can use this for is single family, for example. And again, this whole section we're looking at is, is word for word from state law, so it's, it's really not something we have the ability to change anyway. In fact, that provision that you just referenced is very similar to our previous provision, because that really, it's the old, if you look up at the stricken text on the previous page, it's the old C, I think, if I've got my numbers right.
Yes.
Uh, D.
Oh, yeah, C is the, the three-fourth majority, which was already in there as well. Yeah, so D is very similar.
Yep.
And again, that's state law. Basically, if you want to replat a property that's been limited to single family or two-family, you have to let those around you know.
So would.
But we do that already.
Would you look at, do you look at the zoning map if it's not designated on the?
If it's in the city limits, we look at the zoning.
So then should, for E, should we add something about zoning? Unless this has to be verbatim per state law, we always look at a zoning map and not what's on the plat, so should we include?
Well, I think, again, I would keep it the way it is, because it's word for word from the state law, but we, we interpret that where it says it was designated or reserved for single family or duplex, the zoning is designating it.
Okay, the zoning is that designating, okay. I wasn't sure what, if zoning, if zoning map creates that designation, then. I wasn't sure if zoning, if zoning map creates that designation, and, because that's how we've done it, so... And that's, I think that's all I have, so... Yeah, I think these changes will be helpful. The one thing, and I don't know if this is a place to bring it up or time to address it, you know, we have the administrative allowances for, well, I say, when you can, we have some home builders, if you will, that, and there's a lot of parts of San Angelo where it'll be like lot five and the adjoining five or 10 feet or some distance of, of the next lot. And so, you know, there's a lot of that. And there's a lot of even of lot five in the north half of lot six. And then, you know, a lot of people have taken these 50-foot lots and cut off, you know, taken three lots and made two out of them.
Yes.
Well, currently, they have to go through the replat process for that. So is there a way that we could, and maybe it'd just be now that if it's a simple administrative way, or is there a way that they could take and make it such that they could do that simply? Is, you know, just a lot in the other half and go from three to two without having to go through the subdivision process? Because, because I guess the interpretation of staff is, you can cut off part of a lot, but that part that's remaining has to be large enough to still be a legally conforming lot, effectively 50 feet wide. So, is there some way that we could take three and put them into two and not have to go through a replat process? We don't do much of that, because most of all of those have been picked through. But sometimes we're getting some of these people that they, they buy some land, or buy lots, or, or tear down an old house, or want to add a carport, and it's a lot and a half, and they're having to replat that. And so, is there some way that we could simplify that?
We have met and talked about that and have some ideas. The short answer for this is we didn't want to complicate, there's some other things we want to fix in the subdivision ordinance as well. We didn't want to complicate this too much, since this is largely addressing that recent change in state law. But that is something kind of on our radar to, to continue to look at, to simplify some of those, those situations like you're talking about.
Good. Thank you. Thanks, Russell. I like the idea of some sort of administrative report, maybe monthly, that shows what's been approved administratively. And maybe it could accompany the, the, the meeting packet or something.
Sure.
Just so we can get, for those that want to understand how, how busy we are as a community, it'd be a good, good way to gauge it. Yeah, I think it comes back to this, and I don't, I don't know that I have a magic number here. 10 lots is a lot. So maybe less than 10 lots, is what I'm kind of thinking.
Or E?
Yeah, like six or...
Eight.
Eight, seven?
Are you saying 10 acres and/or eight lots?
I think we need to look at larger tracks. Even if it's a couple of, if someone's subdividing 50 acres into three lots, I think we'd like to see, I don't think we're going to see a lot of that. I think the, the number of lots is probably going to be the determinant for whether we see or, or don't see 90% of the stuff that comes through, or maybe more.
And honestly, we don't get many of those, like I showed you, that are bigger than 10 acres, but only two or three lots.
Right, exactly. So, what do y'all think? Six lots, eight lots?
I like six, I think that came out there.
I like six.
So maybe six lots?
Are you leaving the acres?
Yes.
Okay.
So six or more lots, or 10 acres? Or more?
10 acres or more, okay.
So if I have 10 acres, or say 11 acres, and I come in and replat to four, because I don't have the number six, how long do I have to wait before I come back and replat four more? And then come back and replat the two? I get what I'm getting, but I just have to make the right...
So you don't have to come in here?
That's a lot of jumping through hoops for something that you all have to approve anyway.
You're putting yourself through your own misery there.
Well, I mean, if you're trying to, you know, get just administrative approval.
Yes.
So you come in...
But we have to approve this, if it meets all of the ordinances.
Yeah, that would be a much longer process, because each one would take 30 days.
Yeah.
So if you did it three times, that's 90 days versus coming to the commission, you get it answered in 30 days. So, I don't see people really, there's no advantage to them to doing that, I don't think.
And that brings up a question I had up...
If it's, if they're requesting a variance, we're going to see it.
Anyway.
Right?
Right, that's right.
If they, if they come and want to come to us rather than administrative, can they do that, even though it's not an appeal?
We haven't worded it that way. I mean, if you, if you wanted to, if you wanted to, we could, but...
Okay. Yeah.
Yes? Okay. I, I think that's, are there any other changes we need to discuss? Yes, sir, Mr. Gully.
I guess on the appeal, and if there's conditions, say, the staff approves it, but they have some conditions, and there's one of the conditions you don't like, can you still, I guess you can still have the right to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll double check the wording to make sure it's not an appeal of a denial, but appeal of conditions is included. But I, I think we did that.
I don't know, are we, are we taking a vote on this? We need an amendment?
Yes, if, yeah, it's, it's ready to move on to city council if you all are ready to send it.
So if we have one change to this 10 acres or more, or six lots or more, we need to make that an emotion so that that's part of it?
Yes.
All right, then I'll make a motion as an amendment to the threshold of 10 acres or more, or, and/or six lots or more is the threshold for the commission's preliminary plat review.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That's five zero. Do we also need to make a motion on the administrative report? The admin report?
It's really not a changed, unless you want it written into the ordinance. But I think our intent would be to do that.
Okay, that's fine.
And if we don't, you can yell at us.
Yeah, I want to.
I don't want to yell. Don't yell at anybody. Okay, item two, amendments to section 406 of the zoning ordinance regarding short-term rentals. Oh, boy.
So, I'm just going to go through some of the changes as we've proposed them, and then we can maybe talk about some issues and questions. The original ordinance referred to a license. We don't actually issue a license, and we don't really have a process for that. So, it's just changing the wording, that it is the conditional use that you all approve is that license. So, that's just kind of clarifying the wording. We also reworded the expiration and renewal to clarify the intent. Part of that is some clarification that, you know, if you got approval in December, if we said it expired in one year, if the next year's planning commission meeting happened to be later in the month, so say, when you got approved, it was December 15th, but the next year's meeting wasn't until December 16th, you know, technically you would have expired for one day, and we didn't want that to happen. So we, we changed it to be in the same month, basically. We, and this is one we probably want some discussion on, we added an administrative renewal process. If there were no complaints, you know, no police complaints, no code enforcement complaints or complaints to the planning division, then it could be, renewals could be administrative. And again, obviously, we would check that they've paid hotel tax and all that other stuff they have to do as well. We removed the requirement to provide the operator information in the notification. We would still require that information, and they would still have to post it. We just would not include it in the notification. We did remove the prohibition, or we're recommending removing the prohibition on short-term rentals within 500 feet of each other. I think the thinking is we, we've gotten these that some have been approved, some have not. And so, our thinking was that that could still be a discretionary decision by you all. If you think two of them are too close, you could deny it for that reason, but without the magic 500-foot number. You could also look at reducing that. I think our concern is we've had, we've had these, and I think we're going to continue to have, that they request that variance from the zoning board of adjustment. Another option, if we do keep some measurement, we could specifically write into the ordinance that that is not a variance that can be granted. Now, that opens up a little bit of can of worms, where, you know, an example from another city, we had something that two things couldn't be within a certain distance of each other, but they were across a river, and to drive from one to the other, it was like almost a mile, but...
Do we have the authority to grant that variance?
That's a good question. I think we'd have to research. You have the ability to hear variances from the subdivision ordinance. I believe the state law specifically grants authority for those variances to the ZBA, and I don't think we can change that.
Okay. Just asking.
We, we did add the prohibition that city council talked about a few meetings ago of not allowing them within 500 feet of a school. And we included the provision that that is not variable by the ZBA. So if you're within 500 feet of a school, you just can't do it, period. Now, one piece of discussion here may be how we measure that. You remember the one on Lamar?
Yes.
It was within 500 feet of the school property, but they owned a huge piece of property. It was well over 500 feet from the actual school site. I think we might recommend that you talk about the school site, but then how you define that.
Yeah.
Is it the front door to the school? Is it you draw a line around the, the developed school property? You know, it gets tricky there.
It's really tough.
I think state law requires them to be fenced now, so you could say the fenced area of the school.
I'm just throwing that out there right now.
That would actually be a good way to do it.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
For the child's bare boundaries at that school.
Right, I think that's, that is a good idea.
Why would you just have it be the same as the notification measurement? I mean, the 200 feet for notification, the surrounding properties, I mean, wouldn't that be the same?
You mean, keep the distance, but make it 200 instead of 500?
No, I'm just saying, measure it the same way. I mean, there's obviously defined...
Well, that's property line to property line. So that would be keeping it the way we have it now.
Shouldn't it just be consistent, I mean, the way that we measure?
Well, the issue was the, the case in Southland, where the school district owned a stretch of land that went considerably west of where the main building was.
They didn't use any of it 300, or 300 yards away from the school.
Right.
But yet, it's still school property.
Right, and we, we've had some similar issues. We have some alcohol restrictions that say you can't serve alcohol within a certain distance of, of a school. And our interpretation is that's school property. And so there are some businesses on the other side of Knickerbocker, for example, that are close to the stadium and the ball fields. Well, that's not really a school. They're a long distance from Glenn, but there is school property right across the street. Same with, you know, canes and roses, and, and so, again, we're not talking about the alcohol thing, but how you measure it can be important. And so that's a case where we're looking at maybe changing how we measure those. So typically, it's property line to property line, but there are circumstances where we, we specifically say, well, let's measure it this way. We did clarify the process for appeals. We are proposing shortening that appeal period to 15 days instead of 30. Part of the reason for that is, once you all approve a short-term rental, some of the folks are just ready to go and ready to open, but they have to wait that 30 days to see if anybody's going to appeal to city council. And most people who have appealed, they know they're going to appeal. They may walk to our office the same day, or in a couple of days to appeal. So, we didn't think 15 days is an onerous requirement...
No.
To do that.
Agreed.
We are proposing changing the, the requirement for a change of occupancy and replacing it with an inspection checklist. Part of the reason for that is the certificate of occupancy means something specific in the building code. And what we found is it's triggering people to do things that wouldn't normally be required, changing out windows and some other things to bring it into compliance, basically with the full building code. And so, it's, it's basically going to be the same as it is today, but without the reference to the change of occupancy. And then our building and fire folks would put together a checklist of the things they really care about that are life safety issues. Like was mentioned earlier, the, you know, fire extinguisher, smoke detectors.
Yes.
Making sure there's egress, you know, out of the building. But it wouldn't trigger all these other things in the building code that none of us think are necessary. And it's putting an unnecessary stumbling block in front of some of these conditional uses or short-term rentals, particularly in older houses. And then, we eliminated requirements that are no longer allowed. I think we've talked about this, there was a court case out of Austin that basically said, specifically said you can't require a certain width street. If you allow houses on that street, you have to allow short-term rentals. Same with limits on outdoor gatherings. If I can have a party in my backyard, the court said a short-term rental should be able to have a party in their backyard with the same restrictions, so, or the lack of restrictions. And so we, we basically eliminated those things that the court said we can't do, unless we want to do it for all single-family homes. I think that's it.
That won't...
Be happy to answer any questions y'all have about this.
Anyone have questions?
Oh, go back to, all the way, no, right there. I think it's number five, I think. So you're recommending that we remove the 500 feet? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, so if, if you recommend our proposed ordinance, there would no longer be a prohibition on two short-term rentals being within 500 feet of each other. Again, part of the rationale for that is, you all still have the discretionary ability to approve or deny them, and you can make that decision. But then we don't have to make people jump through that extra step of if they're within 500 feet, they have to go to the zoning board of adjustment. They make a determination that, yeah, this is a unique situation where you should be allowed within 500 feet. Then they have to come to you all again the next month. You may or may not approve it.
Here's my, here's my concern about eliminating it. If we eliminate it, then we don't have a restriction at all. And there's no, nothing to prevent someone from applying the house that's next door to one. And then, we are, we become the, the governing body of that ordinance, and it's, it doesn't seem fair and equitable for us to say, well, we're going to allow this one over here, but we don't like that one over here because of the distance. It's just, and, and I don't, I don't think our community wants to have free range of STRs anywhere, anytime. I don't know that 500 feet is fair. It seems reasonable. It's, it's about a city block.
Yeah.
So, I think if you want to keep the 500 feet, I would want to have a discussion of, number one, how we measure it.
Yeah.
And, and maybe it's okay as is, but I'd also maybe like to have that discussion of, should it be variable by the zoning board of adjustment? Just as a refresher, I think we talked about this before, but we read the ordinance in a way that we thought it was not variable by the ZBA. Anybody, when we make a determination like that of what the ordinance says, a citizen can appeal that to the zoning board of adjustment, which happened in this case. And the zoning board of adjustment said, no, we read the ordinance to say, there's no prohibition on a variance, so you can, therefore you can get a variance. And so, I think we might recommend that if you keep a distance measurement, whatever we decide on the number of feet, that maybe we do say it can't be varied by the ZBA.
I'm great with that, personally. It eliminates...
What we had this morning.
Yeah, the mess that's being created by the, the wavy lines and taking street measurements and...
But again, we also want to talk about if, if we do say 500 feet, are you good with it being property line to property line? Or should we measure along the streets? Or, you know, front door to front door?
I like the front door to front door more than I do as a coach wise.
Yeah.
If you go this way, this way, to get to it, it's, or garage to garage, however you feel, but... however you feel, but that's a big distance. It's a big variables.
Is it from the center of the street? Or is it from the door?
We probably want to define that typically, like with some of the alcohol provisions, it would be basically from the front door, measure out to the center line of the street, down the center line of whatever streets you have to get to the other one, to right in front of the front door and then to the front door.
That would be, that would be clean.
Now, not to throw a wrench in it, but as we were thinking through this, one of the potential issues I could see is two homes that literally are back-to-back, but measured around the streets, it could be more than 500.
There it is.
It's just like you were saying, with the two businesses back-to-back, but you have to get to one.
Right.
Yeah.
But are you okay with two that are back-to-back? Maybe that is okay, because any parking issues or things like that would be on completely separate streets, but it's kind of a can of worms, which is...
Yeah. But if we made the 500 feet maybe a little less, say 400, crow flies.
How long's a city block?
Yeah.
It varies, 300 to 500 is typical, but, I mean, obviously in...
Some blocks are longer than that.
Some can be...
Depends on time and all about, I know. Okay.
What's your thought?
I don't know. I don't, I don't, you can't help but have reference to what we've heard this morning when we're considering this. And it's a...
And that's on the biggest wrench.
It really is. I mean, it's one house that impacted two applicants.
Well, okay, so here's a real issue. I mean, the distance is one thing, and I think it needs to be defined, but the other issue is with the expiration and renewal.
Totally agree.
And so what happens is, we saw this morning, is that one person can go in and basically hold that property by being the first one to come and make an application for it. And then if they're not required to operate it as an STR, they still have the right to do that. And really, they could tie it up for three years, because they can come back in and reapply at the end of that year and say that they've had no complaints and no police calls, and they've still got control.
Well, and we, I don't know that we've had any actually do this, but we've heard some neighbors who are opposed to STRs talk about doing that, getting an STR approval on their house, just so nobody around them can get it.
Yep.
So that is a worry.
I'm learning. I'm learning a lot here.
But you're right, though. If you all are willing to deny them a renewal if they haven't operated, then that only lets them do that for, you know, one year.
Well, yeah, I mean, certainly, that's not the intended use of these rules.
Right.
The intent is to limit the number of units.
Well, and I think the year that was given was to give them time to do the conditional issues, you know, the paving if they had to, you know, all that.
No, it wasn't even that. No, no. The year was to see how they are as operators. They're coming in as first-time operators. Let's, you got 12 months, let's get a quick look at how things are going. If there's problems, then...
Wax are up and...
Maybe a year different?
I don't know.
I'll tell you, oh, go ahead.
I will say that by adding the inspection checklist rather than a change of occupancy, this should shorten how long it takes them to start operating. And so we'll hopefully have more of the year to see them operate rather than...
And if there's one thing I could say that shocked me in this meeting today, it's the number of short-term rentals that have been through this process.
And have an opening.
And the only the limited number that are actually in operation.
How do we know that they're not operating?
I think that the answer, what we maybe should have said is legally operating.
So they're not paying hot taxes, basically what you're saying?
Or they don't have a fire marshal's inspection?
They do not have the inspections, is what we're saying.
Okay. That's probably the hurdle.
Because technically, they can go register for hotel taxes right now without a conditional use. And they could be paying their hotel taxes and we don't know.
Well, the other aspect of it is, let's say that I want to buy the house next door for a short-term rental, and I won't buy it or won't do anything until I get approval, and it takes me X amount of time to get it approved. So you want to make a prudent purchase, not just, I don't want to go buy it and then get denied.
The, the, some of the realtors that we've been working with on, since that has been brought up, of people can say, I want to buy this house, but it's contingent on this. The problem with that is a lot of homeowners don't want to wait for them to come to this meeting and go through that, so a lot of them just are like, well, I have to buy this house. I'm hoping, a lot of them look at this ordinance as a checklist of, well, I've done this, I've done this, I've done this. I'm, there's no reason for the planning commission to not approve me.
I think you're right. They don't realize it's a discretionary review by you all.
Correct.
They think if they meet the requirements, you're going to approve it, which isn't necessarily true.
Which is what happens today.
And we're trying to do a better education job with them.
And it's not a fiscally responsive means of acquiring a property. If you're, if the only reason you're buying a house is to operate a short-term rental, you have to put a condition in the agreement.
Right.
That you're going to get it approved before you buy it.
Well, then a seller is not probably, with that process being as long as it can be, a seller's not going to hold their property off the market that long just for you to decide. So you're not going to get the house you want, and I don't see many sellers sitting back and waiting for that conditional use. Now, they will on a contingency of the sale of another property, because they have the right to continue to show the house and sell it and then give notice. So number one, buyer's gone. If number two buyer can come in and, within a timeframe and purchase it. But this wouldn't be the same. So that's why they're buying, because they're not being able to wait.
So we also did have a suggestion?
Okay, sorry. We also did have a suggestion of, instead of doing the 500 feet, do it of either a percentage or a specific number per neighborhood. Like you can only have 10 in Lake Nazworthy neighborhood, or you can only have 5% of all the houses within a neighborhood can be short-term rental. We did have a suggestion of that, if you like that, instead of keeping it at...
The concern I have there is that you get a concentration in a couple of blocks.
Yeah.
And then the folks that aren't operating short-term rentals, that don't like them, are really unhappy that they've got five units instead of one that are impacting their lives.
Well, and...
And that probably has a greater potential to impact value than a one-off in the middle of a neighborhood.
And describing neighborhoods is going to be difficult.
Well, we have mapped neighborhoods that we would use. I know it doesn't always, I know people sometimes questions, well, that's not really in the Bluffs neighborhood, for example. But we have boundaries, and they're on the city's website of what a neighborhood is.
We could utilize that, but it bothers, unlike you, it bothers me for three of them to be on the same block.
I think spreading them out is part of a means of mitigating the community objection.
So let me throw out another, if we're going down the road of keeping some sort of separation, I think we would probably recommend writing in some sort of grandfather provision where, because we've just approved some that are within 500 feet of each other, we, I wouldn't think we would want to deny them a renewal just because they were already within 500 feet.
Well, are they, are they compliant? What about the ones that are non-compliant?
Well, you could still deny them for other reasons. I just wouldn't want us to just reject their application completely because they're within 500 feet of another one. They should, they should be able to continue it if they're operating appropriately and following the rules, no complaints. We shouldn't deny them simply because they're within 500 feet of another if they've already gotten approval in the past.
Okay. So you're saying if it's an approved STR that's operating, and it's within 500 feet of another one that's approved and operating, we would allow it to continue?
They should both be able to renew as long as they're...
Grandfathered.
Yeah. I don't think that impacts more than a couple of properties.
No, it shouldn't.
And we denied two of the three today.
Yes, and...
Because of the distance.
Yeah. And the other suggestion is if we could exclude the CBD zoning from this, from any type of feet.
Well, and even beyond that, I think when this came forward, the 500 feet, in my mind, was intended to protect neighborhoods.
Yes.
But we wrote it, it applies citywide, so I would suggest we only apply it to, like, single families RS zoning. Any commercial area that allows a hotel, you shouldn't say you can't have two STRs. So any commercial, industrial, CBD zoning, I don't think the 500 feet should apply.
I agree.
I agree too.
Can we tell the zoning board of adjustments that they no longer have that knowledge?
That's why...
You can. I mean, we've recommended that here on number six. You know, this provision is not variable. I would defer to Brandon, but I...
Do we have that authority?
Yeah, I mean, we would need to write it into the ordinance, for sure. And it would be city council telling them you don't have that authority, but yeah.
I like that not variable. Yeah.
So are you good with the 500 feet, or do we want to reduce that?
I'm good with 500. I'm good with less if you guys feel like it's necessary.
I think what's important to me is the, how you measure.
Yeah, that's where I was going, even with the shorter, was, that's why I said as the crow flies, which is the way you do it. But we saw that some, if you really drove to them, was way over the 500, even just in the examples today. So that's why I said...
John's example of a house, two houses that are back-to-back in the middle of a block.
Yeah, that's the one that sticks out.
Is concerning to me.
Yeah, it does.
Because I don't think that we want them to have two properties that butt up to each other.
In that case, all that does is allow them to apply, and we would still bring it forward to you guys, so you guys still have the ability to...
A discretionary decision.
Correct.
So if one had already done it, and then the ones behind it did it, and this was already going.
Correct.
Our discretionary decision would be, even as the crow flies or whatever.
Correct.
Because if they're within the 500 feet, if they come in to apply, we tell them you're within 500 feet, you can't even apply. Unless you go to the zoning board of adjustment. If we write it to say they can't do that, then we would simply reject their application. You would never see it. So that's part of the question is, in that case, you would still see it. You could still say, hey, they're back-to-back, we're not going to approve it because of that.
I'd rather see it.
Okay.
Don't you think?
I'd rather just have clear rules that everybody understands.
Well, have we found that yet? Luke, you're thinking this is...
The simplest way is the keeping the 500 feet or changing the number, but just property line to property line.
Yeah, you have 400 as the crow flies.
I think 500 feet is good. I think it's... We've just ran into that problem here lately, partially because we had mishaps, people buying stuff before they knew they could.
300, then 200.
Yep. Okay.
Leave it at five.
Okay.
So leave it at five, have grandfathering for existing.
Yes.
Keep it lot line to lot line measurement.
Yes.
Yep. As the crow flies.
And number six, make sure that one's done.
Oh, yeah, not variable.
And allow in commercial districts?
Allow it in commercial.
Not in commercial, just residential.
No distance.
So I think, I would say non-residential for sure.
Okay.
Now, what about apartment-type zoning?
I, personally, I don't see an issue with having it in RM.
I don't either.
You're allowed to do month-to-month leases in apartments, so less than 30 days, they've got to furnish the unit to do it. Maybe they tap a market that reduces the number of houses that operate like this, but I don't, I don't think it's a, I don't see it as a major problem.
RS1, RS3?
I would say all RS, so RS1, 2, and 3.
Yes.
Single-family, duplex.
Residential. Yeah, RS, RS, not RM.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, not RM.
Yeah, because when I, which one on Tuig that's residential? That's nine, it's the little one.
Oh, yeah, that's condos. It's not apartments.
Okay, so are we saying condos can have STRs?
It's going to depend on the zoning. If it's RM zoning, then...
Each individual owns...
Well, they have homeowners association.
Well, then under the current ordinance, well, that's likely RS. It's probably townhomes, is how those are typically done, which is an RS3 zoning.
He's talking about the two developments on Tuig that are on the river. Is it Tuig? No, it's not. It's Avenue.
What I'm talking about is on Tuig. I used to own three of those. Could I short-term rent them? I sold them, I don't own them.
No. Didn't you have a homeowners association?
We have.
The River Terrace.
Because I know the homeowners associations and several of them will not allow rentals their owned properties.
Under our current ordinance, it's property line to property line. And so it's, it says, you can't have a short-term rental on a property that's within 500 feet of another property with a short-term rental. But what that means in reality is, in an apartment complex, you could have eight short-term rentals, because it's all on the same lot.
Yes.
So, I mean, to me, it seems like RS is the zoning to have the 500 feet.
Yeah.
And other zoning districts, then it doesn't have the 500 feet.
I agree.
Okay, anything else we didn't cover?
Okay, can we, let's talk about the operator information in the notification.
Okay.
Obviously, that was written in the ordinance for a reason. I mean, it's kind of a specific thing that hadn't been talked about. Can we not put that information in the notification for some legal reason?
I don't think so. I think our concern is if you're putting it in there, in the notifications, before they've even been granted the conditional use, I mean, you're kind of creating a scenario where, I mean, they could be harassed, there are phone numbers out there, and you don't even...
That's the point.
Well, I know, but if they don't get the approval, I mean, I think the real reason is, once they are approved, they maintain that information. They have a requirement in there where if that information ever changes, then it's on them to send out the 200-foot notices of that. So, but no, I don't think there's a legal reason you can't have it in the...
No, that's right. We can keep that in if, yeah.
One of the reasons is we have been questioned by a lot of the applicants about, we don't make commercial businesses do this, and we don't make residential people do this.
But you're going in the middle of a neighborhood.
And that is the answer we give them.
You're impacting a lot of folks around you potentially, and if you can't stand for what you're doing to operate your business in the middle of a neighborhood, then maybe you shouldn't have the business there.
Well, if you're leaning towards keeping it, we might make that one similar to what we just talked about. Maybe that's not necessary in a commercial district.
No.
Maybe the operator information's only in a RM district as well.
Yes.
I'd be fine with that.
Yes.
So reworded expiration and renewal text to clarify intent. Trying to find that. I mean, I think, I don't know if I, I don't know if I'm okay with the administrative renewal process, just because of all the things that we've just talked about.
Number four is what you talked about.
Yeah.
And again, that would only be if there've been no complaints.
Yeah, but if they're not operating, there's no complaints. I mean, it's just a thing.
Yeah, I agree.
So either, I'd like to see either add a requirement that they prove that they've been operating during the one year, or that we don't have administrative approval.
Well, I wouldn't suggest, maybe do it after your first renewal? And say, you know, your continued renewals then become administrative?
So the one-year renewal comes back.
One year renewal comes back, but then subsequently renewal?
I think that's the one that we're most worried about.
Yeah, that'd be okay. Yeah.
Would that be good?
But to Luke's unit, on number three, shall be approved administratively and all those words if they have been operating for a minimum of two months, three months, some timeframe.
Well, or within their first year.
Or within their first year.
Yeah, the first year you guys will still see.
Prior. Because I mean, if they open up on the last day of the year, then you don't have anything.
You don't have a record, yeah.
Basically, at the end of their third, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, their third year, three years of operation.
Then it would become administratively renewable. That seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Anything else?
What does paved mean?
Concrete, asphalt.
Correct. We have, I have now cut out the definition of paved surfaces from the ordinance, and I include it in all STR stuff, because it is, it's asphalt, concrete. There's a two-signature layer or something like that, that is textot, two-course, something.
But it's basically a type of asphalt pavement kind of thing.
Some sort of asphalt.
Can't be kollichi, can't be gravel, can't be just dirt or grass. It is defined in the ordinance.
Okay, just not a hard surface, it has to be, okay. I know that's come up prior.
Correct.
So two ways we could do this. If you're comfortable with these, you know, approving it with these changes, sending it on to council, or do you want to see the actual ordinance language back with these changes?
I think I'd like to see the language.
I agree. So we'll bring it back in November.
Gives us one more chance to take a look at it, and I think we've talked about a lot of changes.
Okay.
Well, I think they're important, and we want to make sure we get it as right.
Yeah, I agree.
It affects a lot of people.
Unless you have other recommendations you want brought back, then we probably just want to table it until the next meeting.
That's great.
And I don't know.
Anyone wish, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. All right. Should we make a motion to table it?
Yes.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved, we table it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table item two on ordinance amendments. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, 5-0. Public comment, issues or concerns, concerns not on the regular agenda can be addressed at this time. I'm going to open it up for public comment again. I'm going to close public comment. Planning directors report.
Just a couple of things, for those who may not have heard. This is my last planning commission meeting. My last day will be the end of the month. So I appreciate working with all you guys. I think this is a good commission, and again, I appreciate everything y'all do.
We're going to miss you, John.
Thanks. The only other thing I had is, I just wanted to tell you, the November meeting will be on the 20th, which is the week of Thanksgiving. We've looked at, sometimes we look at moving that. This time, both this room and the city council chambers are booked, both the week before and week after. So there's really not a possibility of moving that. But please let us know if you can't make that, because it is the Monday of Thanksgiving week. We want to make sure we have a quorum for that meeting, but it looks like we aren't able to move it this year.
Okay.
That's all I had.
All right. Thank you. Follow-up and administrative announcements or consideration for future agenda items? They got anything there? Adjournment? Anyone make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. You have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, 5-0, it's 1217.